Men, Gudes, invocation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I have the distinct pleasure introducing Pastor Brian Dozier, better known as The Place Church at 22nd Street in about Wilder. I've had the opportunity to visit that church on supplication and enjoy the services there. Pastor Brian Dozier is a Florida native who was raised by his single mother in St. Petersburg, Florida. Throughout his childhood, there was no doubt that he showed evidence of being a unique individual and a compatible gift from God to the people. After attending high school, he continued his study at American Baptist College in Nashville, Tennessee in 1999, and then on to Moody Bible Institute in Chicago, Illinois. In 2001, Pastor Dozier accepted the call in 2009 to become the lead pastor at True Homeless Church in Fortego, Florida. Although Pastor Dozier has had many such schoolings, he believes that the best education came from church mothers, deacons, dignitaries, and testimonies of old pioneers. This led him to his first book called Mamma Mia!, where he provides a spiritual twist on sayings of old such as new. "The grass is greener on the other side," and "An early bird catches the worm." He currently founded The Place, located at 5111 North 22nd Street in Tampa, where he teaches. "The church is more than where you go, it's who you are, and their mission is to help you from where you are to the place God wants you to be." Welcome Pastor Dozier.
Let us all pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity together. God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for this collection of great minds, men and women, as we come together for solutions to all of these horrific issues in our country, and not only in our country, but in the city. We ask you now, God, to give us the strength to come together and get beside of our trials and tribulations, our circumstances, so we may come together for a greater cause as we lead this great purpose of solution for our city as well as our country. God, we ask us now to build us up in the areas of our lives where we're weak and strengthen us where we're torn down, and we'll be so careful to give you all the praise and all the glory and all the honor. We thank you right now. We all said, "Amen."
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Dean Felder.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Vieira.
Here. Okay, couple of housekeeping issues. Number one, I've been contacted by the administration and they are requesting to brief counsel on the issue surrounding yesterday's CSX debacle, or issue, I guess if you will, after public comment. So that'll be addressed after public comment, just FYI. Next, we have public defender Julie Holt, who will be here for the human trafficking workshop with representatives from TPD and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. There are some scheduling issues, timing-wise, with some of our guests today, and I'm going to be, unless if anyone has any strenuous objection, moving this item to occur after ceremonial here today. Any objection from council members to accommodate this?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and begin to ceremonial activities. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
And I believe your office has received a request from Tom Snelling to add something to the agenda this morning.
Thank you, yes. Oh, yeah, sorry. A request from the administration for a walk-on presentation regarding Tampa's population projections and their effect on decision-making for growth in the future in advance of joint Board of County Commission, City of Tampa Workshop on the topic of March 25th. Mr. Shelby, do we need a motion to that effect?
Yes, if you can add it to the end of the agenda.
Okay, may we have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Councilman Miranda, seconded by Councilman Scalko, the fine gentleman in the lovely sweater. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And may also have a continuance, or strike that, a continuance is requested Friday, 5, 6, and 7, by Tom Snelling with planning and development.
If we can, if we can, Mr. Chairman, if I can address that, perhaps we can take that up at the end of the meeting. Just people be on notice at 5, 6, and 7, will not be discussed today, and it will be continued. But I want to bring to your attention that we have to talk about the date because that conflicts with the briefings from the administration, the two-hour briefings for every workshop in March, April, May, and June that have been set, and it was set on February 6th. But if we can address that at the end.
No worries there, but just FYI to the public, items 5, 6, and 7 are being continued to a date to be stated. Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward to ceremonial activities. Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, public safety is one of the most important roles in the City of Tampa, and today we are lucky to have two officers be given this commendation as Officer of the Month. Chief, how do we want to handle this? Do we want to take them one at a time so they get their due gratitude, or do we want to do both of them at the same time? Thank you very much. Thank you. Then, we missed Officer Dowd. We missed him last month. Get over here. I want to thank you. This officer was giving training last time?
Yes.
Teaching officers how to better themselves, and ladies and gentlemen, I went through the police academy, the Citizens Police Academy, and this man taught me so much. He wasn't the one that tased me. I won't hold that against him. But he taught me so much of the intricacies that go on with the everyday lives of the men and women of the Tampa Police Department. I can also say, ladies and gentlemen, on TV, ladies and gentlemen here, if you want to see what these officers go through each and every day, go to the Tampa Citizens Police Academy. But enough about me. Chief, take it over. Let's understand why this man is getting this Officer of the Month.
Good morning, Counsel. Senior Corporal Jared Dowd has been employed with the Tampa Police Department since November 21st, 1994. He's led the department's training unit since January 2015. During that time, he's demonstrated a visionary approach to improving relationships between the Tampa Police Department and the citizens that it serves. One such initiative that was expanding on the chief's request was our Citizens Academy. Because of Corporal Dowd's experience in law enforcement policies and expertise in the Tampa Citizens Academy, he was graciously accepted this commitment and took on this endeavor. This Citizens Academy allows citizens a chance to go behind the scenes and get a realistic look at understanding how the Tampa Police Department functions in the community. One of the main factors that makes this academy so effective is the fact that it is led by Corporal Dowd. He brings the right mix of humor and the ability to tap into others' strengths. He also thinks outside the box. In doing so, he has created and sustained a widely successful program. On top of that, we've expanded the Citizens Academy to go for just youth and the citizens. And even furthermore, we've expanded the Citizens Academy for spouses of law enforcement officers. We feel it's just as important that the family of law enforcement experience what the officers do as well, and that was a huge success. In addition to the academies, Corporal Dowd oversees our in-service training program for the entire department. He builds out the entire curriculum to ensure each person is learning the most up-to-date methods. He's a lead instructor for all the new police officers and is currently working on the training and deployment program for our newly acquired rifles. So his loyalty and passion is not only for the betterment of the citizens of the department, but the officers, their families, and our youth. And for this reason, Corporal Dowd has been selected for the Officer of the Month for January 2020. Congratulations.
Good morning, City Council. I'm Jimmy Owens, Vice President of Tampa Police Benevolations Association, April Larson, our treasurer. Darla Portman couldn't make it today because she's in training, probably training that he wrote right here. So as members of the police department, we are deeply in gratitude for his service to our police officers, and that transcends out to the streets with the training that our police officers get. So on behalf of the Tampa PBA, we'd like to present you with this plaque.
Good morning, Counsel. Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford. On behalf of the Curry family, myself, I'd like to congratulate you on everything you do in putting people through the hell. But I wouldn't mind going through the academy, and so we'd like to give you a brand-new car.
Good morning, City Council. Dustin Portillo with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. You know, I thought I had a pretty impressive career, but mine looks so bleak compared to yours. We really appreciate what you do. We just hosted TPD at one of our locations yesterday with 15 officers. We appreciate you, the partnership, what you guys do. Thank you so much for everything, and there's some little good goodies in there for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Good morning, Mary Lou Bailey. I'm here on behalf of Zoo Tampa. I've been to the academy, hopefully you remember me. I had the common sense, unlike our elected official, not to be tased after the first citizen went, "Ah!" I'm like, "Okay, I'm out of line. I'm not going to do that." But seriously, thank you for the academy. It was eye-opening. I do neighborhood watch for Hyde Park. It's been very helpful. I've been able to share a lot of things with my neighborhood. But on behalf of Zoo Tampa, we hope you are motivated to love wildlife and nature as much as we are on the Board of Directors, and we've given you a family membership to Zoo Tampa. It's good for the whole year. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Counsel. Michael Kilgore with the Godsmart Family Restaurants in Columbia. Thank you for all you do. We have a $115 gift card to the Columbia celebrating 115 years of continuous family ownership. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Donna McBride with the Strass Center. I'm so happy to meet you. Thank you for all that you do for our city and keeping us safe and teaching others to keep us safe. On behalf of the Strass Center, we'd like to give you two tickets to the upcoming production of Pirates of Penzance and tickets to the AMC Theaters.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Enjoy.
Good morning, Counsel. Lisa Covington with the Doubletree Tampa Airport. Thank you for everything you do. We have a two-night stay in here for you, and of course, attend the Doubletree Cookies. Enjoy.
Morning, Counsel. Mike MacArthur, Steps Towing Service. Congratulations. Job well done. Take a break, take some time off. On behalf of Todd Step and Steps Towing Service, I present you with a $50 Bass Pro gift card and a night out in our company limousine. So take some time off and enjoy it.
Good morning, Counsel. Pete Rebby, Bush Gardens. As I say every month that we hold this event, I'd like to thank you for your continued support in recognizing the outstanding efforts of law enforcement in our community and for allowing us, as Bush Gardens, to be part of that process. You know, I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to know Jared for 20-something years, and as an exemplary law enforcement officer as he is, he's a better human being, and I value his friendship. He continues to train the weapons officers at Bush Gardens, so we have a continued relationship there, and I'm appreciative of that. And as a token of our appreciation, I'd like to give you four tickets for your family to come to Bush Gardens, and you can ride in Mike's limousine.
Good morning, Counsel. Carlos Ramos with the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority and Officer for your 25 years of service to our city and for training the next generation of officers and citizens. Thank you so much, and on behalf of the Expressway Authorities, we have a gift card to Outback and a couple other goodies as well.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Lynn Earhart. I'm here representing the Tampa Theater. Congratulations. We appreciate all that you do for the citizens and businesses in downtown Tampa and the surrounding area. A token of our appreciation, it's a membership to the year for you and someone special. Hopefully, your superiors will open up your calendar so you can come and enjoy us real soon. Again, congratulations.
Morning, Counsel. Brian Ford with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Thank you again for the support of this program. Corporal, on behalf of the Glazier family and our entire organization, thank you for you and your family's sacrifice and extended efforts, and we have a little tradition out at one buck. Anybody goes over and above, they get a little game ball. And hearing your story and what you do and what you do for everyone, you deserve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, sir. Steve McElain. See, what you're supposed to ask the Bucks is, "What is the secret answer to the quarterback question?" See, they promised to tell us, you know, this morning, but we're going to wait and see if that happens. On behalf of...
What's that? Uniform shirts.
Where are they? On behalf of Yummy House China Bistro, we're going to provide you with a gift certificate so you can enjoy yourself for lunch or dinner. On behalf of Forbici Modern Italian, you can enjoy yourself again, lunch or dinner. On behalf of the Chicho Restaurant Group, you can enjoy yourself breakfast, lunch, or dinner. On behalf of Prestige Portraits, we're going to provide you with a family portrait so you can go have your portraits done, and when you're finished with all that, you can go work out at the Y. Congratulations.
Can we have the overhead up, please? First time ever worked this, so bear with me. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the next police, Citizens Police Academy that's coming up. Let's please take note. Everyone can get training the same way that I did with this officer. Officer, it's your turn up here.
Well, I'm just very humbling. It's kind of like Christmas. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the community support, but with most successes in law enforcement, it only comes as a result of teamwork. And everything that we've accomplished, it's been a result of incredible staff that we have out in the academy and the incredible support that we've received from the chief's staff and my immediate chain of command. None of it would have been possible without everybody's work together, as with most things in law enforcement, and we hope to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Counsel? Any Councilman Gudes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, training is important. It helps save the officers themselves, their lives, and the citizens. When I look at training, I look at this council, and Councilman Citro's gone through it. Hopefully, the other council members will take advantage.
To you.
You to us?
Yeah.
Those who haven't taken advantage of it, especially shoot, don't shoot in the facts and give you a real character, which is what it's like to be in a situation. So, good job. Keep it up, man. Councilman.
I had the pleasure of going through the Citizens Academy three years ago, I believe, and I think you drove the, you may have driven the police car through the chase and pursuit, and I recorded the video and I added banjo music to it to make it more exciting. I have it here if you'd like to see it, but it was a wonderful experience. I did not get tased, sadly, but it was nice to see what you guys deal with on a daily basis. You know, our group got a greater appreciation because it's not just, you know, they pull over folks for speeding tickets. There's so much more to it, and it increased my respect for you guys, all of you, men and women in the police department, the sacrifices that you make and what you have to deal with day in and day out, because it is not an easy job. High stress, you don't know what to expect, every day is different, so we thank you for your sacrifice and your courage and your hard work and dedication to keep us safe every day. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, sir, for your service. I will confess, I've never gone through the program, so I'm sure, yep, there's a couple of individuals there who will lobby me to do that. Hopefully, my experience is there will be better than my experience in the fire program, which I made through about half of until I totally wimped out, so, God willing, it'll be different. But we thank you very much so for your service and your sacrifice, and that includes you as well as all your loved ones who have supported you throughout all of your different professional endeavors, and we're always just in your debt. Thank you, sir, and God bless you.
Besides your TPD family that's here with you, do you have any other family members that you'd like to recognize that are here?
No, that's all. That's it for now.
Come here, big guy. Because of your dedication to service, commitment to excellence, and going above and beyond the call of duty, you have been chosen for this mark of distinction as Officer of the Month, Tampa City Council. Your peers, superiors, would like to commend you for your dedication and diligence. We recognize your hard work in training Tampa Police's finest by overseeing the in-service training and in building strong relationships with the community through New Spouse Academy and the successful and popular Youth Academy and Citizens Academy. In honor of this, the City Tampa Council presents Senior Corporal Jared Dowd with the commendation on this, the 30th day of January 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Chief? Detective Feldman.
You have a uniform.
Yes, sir. This is my uniform.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have another fine and distinguished officer that we are recognizing today, but I think it's fitting that Chief here explains the reason why you're here today. Chief?
My honor. Detective Charles Feldman has been employed with the police department since 2013. He's worked in District 1 in patrol, he was a field training officer, a street anti-crimes officer, and recently promoted to detective back in September, as you can see by his uniform. He continues to display a strong work ethic, performs thorough investigations, carefully monitors his assigned area, and uses his resources to combat problems while taking the initiative to identify prolific offenders. As you're going to see from what I highlight here, if you did anything wrong, you would not want him to be the detective assigned to the case. So during the summer months, Detective Feldman worked a number of auto burglaries. He identified six suspects that were sharing a residence to hang out, store the stolen property, and commit the auto burglars. He diligently reviewed video footage and was able to link one of the suspects to the auto burglary. Detective Feldman contacted the suspect's probation officer, who gave a positive identification that enabled Detective Feldman to make the arrest. Didn't stop there, though. Detective Feldman discovered that the suspects were also selling spice. Taking ownership of the investigation, he developed a source that could purchase the spice from the residence. He continued to control this purchase of the spice from the residence, and then he authored a search warrant for that location. And with the assistance of his fellow detectives, he was able to execute that search warrant safely. During the investigation, Detective Feldman observed that one of the suspects on social media had a suspended driver's license and was driving, and also, he was out on bond for stabbing an individual. He responded to the area, spotted the vehicle, and stopped the car. The driver, who was a prolific offender, was found to be in possession of 60 grams of meth and 2.5 pounds, not ounces, but pounds, of spice. He contacted the state attorney's office to ensure that his bond was revoked and to keep this offender off of our streets. Detective Feldman is a problem solver and an invaluable member of our crime fight, and a recognition for his hard work. He is awarded the Officer of the Month for February 2020.
Okay, Counsel, I had the pleasure to supervise Charlie, albeit for a short period of time. I knew that he was definitely a special police officer at the time, and then since then, he's been promoted. Charlie, you do a great job for our police department on behalf of the Tampa PBA. We issue this plaque.
Congratulations, Andrew Triscaster, with the Tampa Bay Bucks. On behalf of the Bucks, as Brian alluded earlier, we just want to present you with a game ball. And I also wanted to, Jerry, as well, as you invite your family when the training camp begins, to bring your family over to get autographs and everything so we can, you can meet the quarterback. can meet the quarterback.
Good morning, senior council, Dustin Portillo-Casper's company again. I don't know why anybody would commit a crime, but having you on the streets, I think we're doing pretty well. Appreciate you very much. There's some goodies in here for you. Thank you for everything.
Good morning, Council, again, Jim Carson, Bill Curry-Ford. Hell of a job that you've done. We appreciate everything you do, and we'd like to give you also a brand-new police car. I wish it was an undercover one, but it's a marked vehicle. Thank you.
Morning, Council, Michael Kilgore. Columbia Restaurant, Gosmar Family of Restaurants, have a $115 gift card for you lately, one of our restaurants. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Donna McBride, Strass Center again. Detective Feldman, thank you so much for your work. Thank you for being out there, and thank you for pursuing all of the crime that takes that extra effort and endangering your life to keep us safe. You have, from the Strass Center, two tickets to see the upcoming production of Jersey Boys and a couple tickets to the Academy Theater. Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Carlos Ramos with the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, and Detective, on behalf of a grateful city and the expressway authority, I'd like to present to you a gift card to Outback and a couple of other goodies from the expressway authority. Thank you so much for what you do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Lisa Covington again with the DoubleTree Tampa Airport. Thank you for all you do, and I have a two-night stay for you and 10 of our DoubleTree cookies. Enjoy. Thank you.
Good morning, again, Lanier Hart from Tampa Theater. Thank you for everything that you do. You're a tremendous asset to the city of Tampa, and we appreciate everything that you do. A token of our gratitude is a gift membership to you to the Tampa Theater, and we hope to see you real soon.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, again. I'm still Mary Lou Bailey, and I'm still here on behalf of Zoo Tampa. Congratulations and thank you. I particularly appreciate the problem solving and the multifaceted approach and everything. That's really cool. I hope you and your family will enjoy the zoo for a year. You can come to special events as well as to the Austin Park and help us save wildlife. Congratulations.
Good morning, Council, Mike MacArthur. I'm choking on a piece of candy back there, so congratulations on a job well done, well deserved. On behalf of Todd Stepp, the Stepp Towing Service, I present you a night out in our company limousine, take some time off, enjoy it. $50 Bass Pro gift card. I'm still challenging one person to pull up in front of Bass Pro in the limo, so let's see if you can do it. Congratulations.
Good morning, again, Council, Pete Rebe Bush Gardens. First of all, congratulations on your recent promotion. Thank you for what you do. You have an incredible bio, and appreciate you, you continue to work. I live over that way, so I appreciate all your efforts in that area. Thank you. And on behalf of Bush Gardens Tampa Bay, we're gonna give you and your family four tickets to Bush Gardens. If you have ever expanding family, you can reach out and I can give you some more tickets.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, sir. Steve McElhany, I think you already know all the stuff you're gonna get here, but, but I'll go through it again. Chicho's Restaurant Group, we're gonna provide you with breakfast, lunch, or dinner. On behalf of Forbici, we're providing you with a gift certificate for, you can go over there and enjoy yourself for lunch or dinner. Yummy House China Bistro, you get a gift certificate, and I always understand that the chief wants to accompany you for that one. Prestige Portraits, I'm not sure if you're gonna use your real face on this photograph or not, but, but it's available, so whatever you wanna do. And then the YMCA is providing you with a, a membership so you can go enjoy yourself over at the Y. So, congratulations and thank you very much. And I know Jim Carson is really happy that you're recovering those cars because they're his.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Now, I'm going to present you this, but other than your TPD family, I'm sure there's somebody that you would like to have in a picture later on.
Okay.
Later on. Okay. Cute little boy.
Thank you.
Because of your dedication to service, commitment to excellence, and going above and beyond the call of duty, you have been chosen, excuse me, for this mark of distinction as Officer of the Month. Tampa City Council, your peers and your superiors would like to commend you for the dedication and diligence. We recognize your commitment to meeting the challenges in the community, being devoted investigator, skilled problem solver, and an invaluable member of District One team. It is the honor of Tampa City Council to present Detective Charles F. Feldman with this commendation on the 27th day of February 2020. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you. It's yours now.
I wanna start off by thanking Tampa City Council, Chief Dugan, Chief Burkhaw, the rest of TPD staff, and the organizations that make, that support the Tampa Police Department and make this award so special. I'm truly humbled and honored to be named the Tampa Police Department Officer of the Month. The interesting, the interesting thing about this award that is given to an individual person, anyone in this room who's a police officer knows that to be successful in this career, you cannot simply function as an individual, but it takes a team. That's my son, so it's okay. I'm fortunate to work with an outstanding group of detectives in District One's DLS unit with a great leader in Sergeant Bailey, who pushes me to be better than I was the day before. Lastly, and most importantly, I wanna thank my wife, who just stepped out, Melissa, for her unwavering support and, and to my professional and personal life, even when I get called out in the middle of the night as a detective or on the dive team. Again, I am humbled by this award, and I look forward to continuing to work hard for the citizens of Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on council? Councilman?
Well, you know, when you do something that is honorable, you get rewarded. And I was, you did some things that, that was honorable to get rewarded. So, I think you work for Ruth, huh? Captain Kate?
Yes, sir.
Well, congratulations. I remember I got that award five or six years into my career, so it's an honor to get it. So, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? We thank you for your service, and I'm, I'm glad that your wife and son were here so that they can just see some of the, the honor that you get for the hard work that you put in. We, we're all aware of how difficult your job is and what a stress it is to you and your loved ones, and that's what this award is all about. It's not just to you, but it's also those people who stand behind you. So, God bless you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we move, as previously stated, for item number three. Is, yeah, is Ms. Holt here? The what? Yes. Yeah, they're, they told me that we're gonna be here at this time. And do you want to introduce them three?
Mr. Chairman, you know, that's, that's my, yeah, whatever.
It's your item.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I'll, I'll yield to Councilman Citro, who motioned for item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the city of Tampa, we have some major events coming up. WWE wrestling, we also have Super Bowl coming, and many of my constituents had voiced their concerns of human tra, human trafficking that may be entering the area because of those big events. Today, I have asked several people to be here. Deputy Chief, he's here, of TPD, Deputy, Chief Deputy Donald Lizinski of Hillsborough County, Dottie Grover Skipper with Human Trafficking Report, excuse me, Heather Curry, and Ms. Holt will be joining us later. So, I want this to be informational of what our local law enforcement is going to be doing, how we can educate the public, that if you see something that you think is just not right, who you can call, who you can tell, how we can, how we can get help for these people that are being used against their will. So, Chief, would you like to start out, please?
Morning, Council. Assistant Chief Lee Burkhaw. In reference to the request on human trafficking, both the police department, the city of Tampa, and all our stakeholders are well ahead of the curve and are planning in preparation. It is important to mention that human trafficking is a 365-day-a-year problem and not just a major event problem. In fact, numerous academic studies have failed to link the perceived phenomena of human trafficking to the Super Bowl, including Polaris, which is a leading online organization that coordinates the human trafficking hotline. However, to this point, the Tampa Police Department actively participates in numerous task force.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. You're talking to me?
No, sir. Go ahead.
The task force that we participate in are the U.S. Attorneys Task Force Tampa Bay Area Trafficking, the Florida Attorney General, Ashley Moody, statewide counsel on human trafficking, and what you'll hear about later on, the newly formed Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking, where I sit as a board member. In addition, in our Super Bowl planning, we have a human trafficking subcommittee which follows underneath our intelligence branch for the coordination of the event. This subcommittee has many of the same members that sit on those task forces, so we already have that close working relationship. And that's not only with special event planning, it's with regular planning. You'll hear from the chief deputy, and you'll hear from other organizations, and what's good about this area is whether it's a Super Bowl, whether it's a Gasparilla, we have that relationship already in existence. Furthermore, the Tampa Police Department, Hillsborough County sheriffs, are one of the few organizations that actually sent officers to the Super Bowl in Miami, not just to observe, but actually embedded in their organization specifically for human trafficking. The Tampa Police Department and the city of Tampa have already made plans to incorporate human trafficking awareness training for both sworn and non-s sworn employees. In addition, we're exploring options for our community partners. We are also applying for a $100,000 grant to supplement our resources and our goals in this endeavor. We've partnered with the Internal Association of Human Trafficking Investigators, who will be providing free awareness training and investigator training coming up in the month of April. That's the highlight of the overview, and I'll let Chief Deputy come up next.
Good morning. On behalf of Sheriff Cronus, I'd just like to thank the members of the city council for the opportunity to be here today. The Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office has been...
May I have your, your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Donald Lizinski, the chief deputy for Hillsborough County.
Thank you very much.
The Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office has been and will continue to be very proactive in combating human trafficking in Hillsborough County. We started preparations early in 2019 based on concerns from some of the citizens that we serve, as well as what we saw in the Super Bowl at Atlanta. We've been conducting operations, as, as the chief said, it's not just a Super Bowl event, it's 365 days a year. So, we've been conducting operations at residences, hotels, and roadways where potential victims of human trafficking might be frequenting. And during 2019, we made over 199 arrests for prostitution-related charges. Over 65% of those were related to the Johns, the men, the traffickers that are trafficking these women. Through advanced training and an increased focus on detecting and stopping human trafficking, six of those arrests were for human trafficking charges. And more importantly, we saw the efforts that we made, because in previous years, we actually didn't have any arrests for human trafficking. And the most important factor of this is that we assisted in recovering four victims of human trafficking, and that is our ultimate goal, to help these people, whether it's adults, children, male or female, to make sure that they're getting the help they need. Our office has additionally increased efforts to identify and arrest adults who are preying on our youth. Our detectives have recently received over 80 hours of advanced training on conducting overcomeber operations related to subjects preying on youth for sexual acts. Our detectives now, like TPD's, are Internet Crimes Against Children certified, so they, they can conduct these investigations. During 2019, our detectives made five arrests for subjects that were traveling to our county or city to engage in sexual acts with children, and we expect that to increase over the time period. With Super Bowl 55 in Tampa, our personnel, just as, as TPD, will work hand-in-hand, are continuing to receive additional training to keep up to date with current trends and to assist with identifying traffickers or victims of trafficking. Our detectives will be working with the Tampa Police Department, our various federal agencies, as well as the various task forces that we all participate on, to conduct multifaceted operations as we lead into the Super Bowl. These operations will focus on deterring the demand for prostitutes and rescuing victims of human trafficking. Our detectives have also forged relationships with local non-governmental organizations to include Created and Calea Freedom. These groups have been vital in providing services and safe places for victims of human trafficking or women in need of specific services. And we'll have representatives with those when we conduct the operations to ensure that if we come into contact with victims, we can help them and try to break that cycle between the traffickers and the victims. We've also partnered with Seattle Against Slavery to assist with our efforts. They assist with reducing human trafficking through education, advocacy, mobilization, and technology. And we'll use them as a test as we go into WWE, the wrestling event, WrestleMania, and Super Bowl 55. And again, our focus is to deter and prevent this. We believe we've had some success with these operations. We monitor websites where the Johns, the people that pick up the prostitutes and the traffickers participate, and we've seen them put out warnings when we're doing undercover operations. They'll tell what area of town we're in, what the decoys look like, what our undercover officers look like, and how they can try to find out if they're law enforcement. We've seen postings saying, and I'll just quote this one, "Sheriff Chad is no longer limiting the sights on hookers. Now he has announced his intent to go more after Johns, meaning all of us could be next." Quote. So, we know we're making an impact. Again, our office, like TPD, and I, and I won't list the same, the task force, but we all participate on those. And the outstanding relationships that we have and the communication with our law enforcement partners, we know we'll be able to address this from a number of different angles. And, and as the chief said, one of our subcommittees is human trafficking, and that is a priority for us. And, and we feel that with the steps that we've already taken and upcoming advanced trainings, that the sheriff's office and all our partners are prepared to identify and take any necessary action coming up during the Super Bowl. And, and I can always be a point of contact if there's follow-up, as, as well as one of our majors, Jeffrey Harris.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Chief, as, as most of us, and I'm not talking about council, I'm talking about the city of Tampa, excuse me, are ignorant to human trafficking.
Yes, sir.
I have found out that there are a lot of, of people that are brought into this area through indentured servants, from Southeast Asia, from South America. Is at some point at an arrest where the, the prostitutes, the people that are being used, get arrested while the Johns are going out and having another cocktail, is there at some point where the person that is being used has a decision or can make a decision, go to jail? Or go and inform somebody without fear of, of brutality, or without fear of, of being deported back to their country, or without fear of, of having to be bailed out and go work on the streets again? Is, is there some opportunity where a person who is, is being held against their will, be, will, being made to serve, is there some opportunity where they can make a choice?
Absolutely. When we do those operations, we have detectives debrief them, and then some of the organizations I mentioned, because they just, they, they often are former victims of human trafficking. So, sometimes it, it's a, it's a vicious cycle. They have a lot of control over these people, so we do give them an option. If they're being trafficked and they tell us that, we will not arrest them. We will get them the services and hook them up with the organizations so that they can hopefully get out of that pattern of behavior and, and get the help they need, because that is our ultimate goal, is to get them out of that process.
Because I'm, I'm in fear that even, even if an arrest is made and the person wants to get out of this, if there's a clear path for them, because most of them are, again, held against their will and will be bailed out within 24, 48 hours and just forced to go work in this industry again.
Absolutely. And we just had one recently, and, and we recognize that, and a lot of them are, are dependent on drugs, and they, that's how they... And a lot of them are dependent on drugs, and that's how they manipulate them. We just had an individual, we did not arrest her. We had assistance and put her in a treatment program. So, there are opportunities for do that, and that's what we prefer to do. We know we can arrest our way out of the situation, but that's how we have to get in contact with some of these women, is to set up these operations.
You know, Hillsborough County is also making efforts, and I'm hoping that we can, we, the City of Tampa, can join in with Kimberly Overman and other people. Hillsborough County, is there a place where citizens within the county can call and say, you know, "I'm seeing somebody that just doesn't fit the description of a parent or a boyfriend. You know, I fear that somebody is being held against..." Is there a hotline that can be called?
There is a human trafficking hotline, and we can get you that information, as well as they can call law enforcement anytime. And just as the chief said, we're working to get more information out to the community as things progress, so people know what to look for. Because like you said, not everybody is aware of what is going on. So, it's important for us to educate the public as well.
And here's the most important question. Most people are in fear of calling law enforcement. Can it be done anonymously?
Absolutely. They just have to provide us some specific information. We can act on it, but we can act on it without a name.
Okay. Mr. Chair, before, Mr. Councilman Carlson asks a question. Chief, can you come back up? I'm going to ask you the similar questions, and maybe you can answer them before I even ask.
Okay.
Is, do we have a hotline for the City of Tampa? Do we have something on our website through TPD?
It's a national hotline that we go through, and then they relay that information to us, in addition to our regular, whether it's a text, whether it's an email. So, we have a regular process to make any type of complaint, but specifically, there's a national hotline for human trafficking.
And as chief here alluded to earlier, what is the specific information that somebody can give you? Description, place, time of day, that type of thing?
Yes, and actually, to be honest, a lot of the people that call are the victims themselves. And they're in a position where they're at that compromising point, and they will call and reach out to us. So, a lot of that is for them to do and for them to feel safe doing where somebody can't look over their shoulder.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goodez and Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear a lot about the latent work in detectives. Are we having some type of training for those guys that get out there first? Those officers that are out there first, those school resource officers? A lot of school resource officers, prostitution was big at some of the high schools. And that's, you know, that is a big place. So, I'm just wondering, are we training the S.R. roles? Are we training those officers on the street to also know these signs and combat some of the issues that go on?
Yes, they've all had the standard training, but we're stepping that up in April. And we're doing specific awareness training for all sworn law enforcement. And that'll be provided by the whole region through the task force. In addition to that, we're doing advanced specialized training, which the chief deputy talked about specifically for the investigators. So, we're doing it for the first-line officers and for the investigators that are working these.
Is Plant City and Temple Terrace on the task force as well?
They'll be provided in the region, because it's for the entire region.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, thank you to my colleague, Councilman Citro, for bringing up this important issue. I hope we'll discuss it again, and as you all have ideas, please let us know. The human rights community has communicated, I think, with all of us, but I know I've gotten lots of messages over the last year or two about this issue. And in particular, they want to make sure that we protect the rights of the victims and that we try to help them in every way we can. And I wonder with either of you, are there any ordinances or rules or motions that we should be making? Anything that we should be doing to protect the rights of victims and to help them to be discovered faster?
The federal law and the state laws are already on the books for that, and they're already enhancing those laws, as someone else alluded to that earlier. So, at this point, I think that we're where we need to be. But if something comes up in any one of those task forces that the council can assist with, we will pass that.
Please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, sir. And you know, if I may, sir, one question. And this, I guess, would apply to all law enforcement agencies, which is, and I was gone for the first five minutes, and this may have come up. But you know, this is why it's so important that law enforcement have a humane policy, as I believe the City of Tampa does with regards to individuals who are undocumented and over here, because they're quite often individuals who are ripe for exploitation. And that's why it's so important that local law enforcement have a compassionate, open policy with that community so that these folks don't feel afraid to come out, because often, they're the first in line to be exploited. And we've got to get the bad guys, no matter who they exploit. So, I think that's a really important thing to know, if it wasn't noted before. But thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, chief and deputy chief. Now, I'd like to ask Ms. Dottie Skipper to come up, please. Ms. Skipper has been in the forefront of helping human, excuse me, of awareness of human trafficking. She has had many years of experience. Can you please tell us some of the things that our citizens can do and how you are helping?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Citro, for inviting me here today. And thank you, council members, for allowing us to be here and for making this an important part of what we need to do as a city. I am Dottie Grover Skipper. I've been in the trenches with human trafficking, actually anti-trafficking, for over 30 years, earned every single wrinkle on this face. But it is, I guess, one thing that I want to just highlight is some of the things that the City Council can continue doing is I know we worked hard. I think Mike Suarez, when he was on the council, worked hard with the bathhouse ordinance. And I think if just enforcing the ordinance and the laws that are already on the books with City Council, I think that would help tremendously, especially to protect the rights of the victims. Because that was our concern, I guess, with a lot of the, everything going on with the massage parlors and the bathhouses a couple of years ago, that the women were going further underground instead of really coming out and getting helped. So, I think if enforcing the laws that are already on the books in the city would be very, very beneficial and helpful. Also, there was a mural downtown. The Tampa Junior League had helped to put this mural, a priceless mural. It was on a building right by the bus station. And a new owner came into that building and painted over the mural less than a year after it was put up. So, those kind of things, if we could identify other places to have murals put up, I believe that we could do some fundraising to get the muralists to put those back up. Perhaps bus wraps, you know, for the city, those kind of things would be very, very beneficial and helpful in helping to spread awareness of this issue. I do want to say that we, it's important not to overlook that boys and men are also trafficked. So, not only focusing on the girls and the women, but to be on the lookout for boys and men that are also trafficked and many times made to prostitute. I'm very, very honored to be appointed by our Attorney General, Ashley Moody, to the statewide council on human trafficking. The esteemed law enforcement that do such an incredible job are also part of that. There is a new commission that just started, and Heather will be talking about that just yesterday, through the county. And then, I am honored, I need to leave here shortly, because we are launching a new collaborative called the Safe Collaborative, which will be a fundraising machine for issues that are identified in our community that need funding, the gaps of human trafficking. So, that new initiative is being launched today. My co-chair, Brian Robinson, is with me with that. And I think for the Super Bowl, I had the opportunity to go down to Miami and was involved in many outreach efforts down in Miami. And the community, there is an organization called the Women's Fund, who was the NFL Host Committee's official partner. And they really rallied the entire Miami community and South Florida with outreaches, such as outreaches to the convenience stores, taking in information, outreaches to the hotels and the motels, taking in information about human trafficking. And between those two outreaches alone in Miami, there are over 20 missing children identified, because they take in missing children booklets from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Over 20 kids were identified and found through that outreach. And we know many of these missing children are prime targets for trafficking. So, those are the kind of outreaches that I would love to see. And I know these two organizations who headed up those outreaches are planning on being here. And also, outreaches into the strip clubs. I have an organization, we go into the strip clubs and the brothels, and we have identified trafficking victims, because we know that it happens in those establishments. So, having a robust outreach, awareness outreach into the strip clubs and our brothels would be tremendous. And I'm happy to help organize these outreaches for the City of Tampa and our community. I think, I think that's it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have any suggestions on how the city can be helpful? And your efforts and combined efforts of inter-agencies to help the citizens become aware?
Yes, I think these awareness outreaches. And I know that there is an outreach coming up through an organization called No More, where they will be going into the hotels and motels and distributing information. But I think as many awareness trainings as maybe the city could do for the general population, I think would be extremely helpful, and I'm happy to help connect to those resources as well. And I do have the human trafficking hotline number, the national number. It's 1-883-737-888. Also, Miami had a separate hotline number, just specific to Miami for, it's like a rapid response number. So, I have no idea if anything like that is being planned, but I think it was very, very helpful. Because sometimes, it takes a while for the national hotline number to trickle down to the right law enforcement agency to go check things out. So, that would be something that perhaps we could.
Could you please keep the members informed so that if our constituents have any comments or questions, we can relay your message?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, from the Crisis Center, Ms. Clemkey, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Kathleen Clemkey. You were close.
Thank you. I'm from Chicago, and I'm always remembering the, putting an S in front of the case. So, I apologize.
I'm the senior director of Corbin Trauma Center for the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. I'm also on the Commission on Human Trafficking. And I'm here today to tell you a little bit about what we're doing at the Crisis Center. Most of, we do every day, just like the law enforcement. We have 211 at the Crisis Center, which is the gateway to crisis services in Tampa Bay, as many of you know. At the Crisis Center, we'll deal with the tough subjects: suicide, sexual assault, domestic violence, human trafficking, and the severe financial crisis people face, and mental and behavioral health issues. We don't just do support, we have resources, but ongoing services, including advocacy, care coordination, and trauma therapy. Ongoing advocacy for those who are victims of sexual violence as a certified rape crisis center for Hillsborough County. Trauma counseling at four locations and specialized care coordination, which is a victim-centered approach to handling the ongoing needs of someone with life-changing trauma, such as suicidal ideation, military and veterans' issues, human trafficking, and the special needs of young people transitioning to adulthood. The volume of calls, and there's thousands every year, and clients we see, make us keenly aware that many of the populations we serve are at risk for human trafficking, some that you don't even think about. Teens, LGBT, youth, students, people suffering from mental or behavioral health issues, children, people who are disabled, undocumented, and people who are homeless. All of those who would never tell or unable to tell. The Crisis Center has been providing 24/7 services for over 40 years. We do outreach to community groups weekly to increase awareness of all the services that we have. The Green Dot Bystander Intervention Program teaches our community to recognize and respond to violence. Sexual assault advocates are available 24/7 to assist law enforcement with sexual assault cases and human trafficking victims upon rescue. The advocates have unique training and skills to provide in-person crisis intervention, support, and resources. If the sexual assault happened within 120 hours, the Crisis Center can provide a medical forensic exam. If the victimization is past that time, support services, care coordination, trauma therapy, assistance with crime victims' compensation, and some of the other services are available. Trauma therapy is free on a sliding scale, six days a week. Along with ongoing trauma services, we connect clients to our community partners for assistance with shelter, immigration, medical, legal, and dental services, substance abuse treatment, and employment. The advocate or care coordinator can provide the consistent connection between law enforcement and the victim. This support can lead to survivors being better victim witnesses for the prosecution victims. We anticipate an uptick in services during events like WrestleMania and the Super Bowl. However, we see upticks all the time. Beginning of the fall semester for local colleges and universities, the holidays, Gasparilla, spring break, or even a high-profile suicide increases our calls. I'm grateful to the partnerships the Crisis Center has with governmental and non-governmental agencies in the Tampa Bay area. It allows us to provide the myriad of services needed to victims, all of our victims and victims of human trafficking. We have formal and informal agreements with law enforcement agencies, the sheriff's office, police departments, McDill and University of Law Enforcement, the State Attorney's Office, and McDill judge advocates. These agreements include providing 24/7 medical forensic exams, collecting, preserving, and storing the forensic evidence, providing advocates to support the victims, and provide legal advocacy, such as injunctions and accompaniment to court, and nurse examiners to testify to the validity of the evidence collected. We have formal and informal agreements with agencies, schools, and community partners. We're the best at providing 24/7 crisis intervention, forensic medical exams, advocacy, care coordination, and trauma. However, we rely on our relationships with the community partners that have expertise with the at-risk populations I mentioned earlier. These agreements ensure we are assisting human trafficking victims in the best possible way, by connecting them to the experts while providing consistent care. We know human trafficking survivors need many, many resources, and they're often overwhelmed by what lies before them. Human trafficking survivors, like all victims we deal with at the Crisis Center, deserve a seamless, if not effortless, experience back to safety and health. I did a quick Google search that brought up 25 agencies in the Tampa Bay area that provide services to victims of human trafficking. This is impressive, but can be overwhelming for a victim to navigate. I am hopeful that law enforcement and service providers will unite in one network to provide those seamless services, along with written standards of care and best practices, and agreements by those in the network to follow those standards, and written procedures on how to best access and prioritize care for human trafficking survivors. And I'm hopeful that Tampa Bay will no longer tolerate human trafficking and that it isn't a Super Bowl issue, but it's an ongoing issue that we need to be part of every day. Feel free to contact me personally at the Crisis Center if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, thank you very much. If you have not been to the Crisis Center, please, go, take a tour. See the amazing work that these people do. Again, I ask the question of law enforcement, and I'm going to ask you too. Do you offer the opportunity for anybody that is involved in human trafficking and working, whether it be in the streets or the high-end hotels or wherever, if they call you and say, "I want out of this, can you help me?" Are you there for them?
Yes, our care coordinators.
If they're down at Orient Street Jail and they say, "I want out of this." Please, can they contact you for that?
Absolutely. And we, our advocates can go to the jail and talk to them. We, you know, and sometimes it's, it takes several times for someone to leave the life sometimes. It's overwhelming. It's not easy. And so, our advocates and our care coordinators and therapists are aware of that and will work with them until they get what they need.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you for being down here. Now, we have Ms. Heather Curry here, who is with the Hillsborough County Commission, and she's part of the Commission on Human Trafficking. Ms. Curry, I'm hoping that Hillsborough County and the- Ms. Currie, I'm hoping that Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa can work very closely together, especially on the events that are coming up, and full-time. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, so I'm Heather Currie, and the Lead Staff for the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking, which just had its inaugural meeting yesterday at 1:00 PM, and it was a pretty outstanding group of folks, and I think it points to the possibilities of collaboration within our community, and I think you heard that repeatedly through the last set of presentations, right, just indeed for collaboration, and the possibility of kind of these previous silos networking together at this particular juncture. More importantly, I think that beyond the Super Bowl, which is great leverage for paying attention to the issue, but can't be the only thing that we're paying attention to, that's a rather short-sighted approach, right? So how do we create a long-game approach that lets us really continue that coordination over time? And the Commission is one way in which we can do that. So we've had several efforts. I had like a brief slideshow presentation, yeah, we can do that. The next one? So we've got a few points. You gave me, what, 60 minutes, 120, somewhere in there? Perfect, alright. So I've narrowed it down to one slide, actually. So we established the Commission, but additionally, we've got the Hillsborough Heroes Against Human Trafficking Program, and Deputy Chief Burkall and I were talking about possibilities to collaborate. That's a 50-minute training that is available not just for law enforcement, actually, law enforcement has their own training that's much more specialized, but for the broader community, because we're not just employees, right? We're also community members, we're neighbors, and we see the issue, and we don't always know what it is that we're looking at. Something strikes us, perhaps in our peripheral vision is odd, right? But we don't really know what to do with it. So this creates an awareness of what are the particular signs that you are looking for. So, we paired up with Jeremy Lewis, who's the President and CEO of a group called International Association of Human Trafficking Investigators. Jeremy Lewis was also an investigator in Pinellas County for a long time, has a particular attunement and fondness for this community, and so he's been working very closely with us to develop that training. So that is being offered through the Hillsborough Heroes Against Human Trafficking. There's a lot of words to say, but I'm getting very good at saying them fast. So that is a community-wide training. We're looking at cross-sectoral partnerships with businesses, with nonprofits, with various agencies and organizations in town, to provide the 50-minute training, free of cost, to all employees or agency members or organization members. So, and that provides basically a kind of a very succinct, but very thoroughgoing way of seeing, knowing how, knowing how to see what it is we're seeing. I stumbled through that one. We're good. So, that's also offered. We have a countywide one that's for the 5,000 Hillsborough County employees. It's an internal-facing training. It looks very similar, but it's so that all folks, when we're out in the community, have some greater attunement to the issue. And this isn't about creating a set of fear tactics, but just knowing how to read the situation differently. Because a lot of times we know, we think that we're seeing something that looks like, say prostitution, right? And without those signs, what we are going to see, what it is we think we see. But if there's greater attunement and awareness, if we know how to ask the right questions, and know how to look with a greater sense of not skepticism, but a greater kind of criticality at that situation, then we can ask some questions at that point. Is this what we think we're seeing, or is it something else entirely? So, we also have changes to an ordinance, which expand the languages in the previous ordinance, and allow us greater capacity to go in and make sure that those are being upheld. And so it's now Cantonese, Mandarin, and any dominant language of that particular business. Finally, and this is what I'm really excited about, this is something that we can talk about further collaborative possibilities, is the Collaborative Lab. Has anybody been to a Collaborative Lab process? Right? So it's a pretty extensive, I think it's about four or five hours usually, and the idea is that you're creating not just kind of group process stuff, which is great, but you're actually walking out with a workable set of products and initiatives. And then there's an ongoing support network in the aftermath. So there was one done about five years ago, and what we're looking at is creating one, at some point, obviously, the date is to be determined, that requires a lot of partnership and collaboration, hence the name Collaborative Lab, but the idea is that we're actually going to follow up on the previous one and then figure out what are the next steps. So that's what we're doing at Hillsborough County. I think that there's a tremendous opportunity for partnership right now. So what questions do you have?
Any questions? Mr. Chair, again, how can, how can I, as a councilman, how could any of the councilmen, how could anybody become a part of this? Do you have any telephone numbers? Do you have ways for us to communicate to our constituents on this?
So I actually have my contact info, so as the Lead Staff, I'm happy to convey information as it comes up.
Perfect.
I think also, those are public meetings, the Commission meetings, and so we welcome participation during those public meetings. But also, anytime that we can talk about further collaboration, it's formative right now, right? It's an emergent process, and this moment of collaboration between the city and the county is, I think, incredibly rich and deserves a lot of attention, but we don't have that architecture yet. So I think that these are very earnest conversations about what that will look like.
Well then, can you please keep the council involved in your efforts? And I would, I would personally like to meet with you and Commissioner Overman, and so we can further discuss this, on how the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County can work together on this.
Great, and also, if there are ways in which somebody can come and give a report of what the council's doing at those meetings and vice versa, we can always have an exchange of information, if that ever is a possibility of being built in.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks so much.
Chairman, I, I see that we have our public defender in the audience right now, Ms. Julianne Holt. Ms. Holt, do you have anything that you would like to add to this?
Good morning, Council. Julianne Holt, Public Defender. The only thing I think I'd like to add is that we also are working within the criminal justice system with all the partners and with all the providers that you've heard speak here this morning to you, and our primary focus in our office is, we have obviously put in place through our case management system mechanisms by which to identify victims of this type of activity. And then what we're also trying to do is meet, obviously, with the Chief Judge, and both in the juvenile arena as well as the adult, because there are actual victims of this type of activity that are in the juvenile courts. And what we're trying to do is find a way to not use, however, the criminal justice system and to revictimize these particular individuals. Because obviously, what people want to do is they want to intervene, they want to remove them from this lifestyle, they want to provide them services, but obviously, my role in the criminal justice system is to ensure that, that the right individuals are being prosecuted, and that if you have a valid defense to the situation you've found in, we're obviously going to advocate that position, and not allow the system, however, to be used as a mechanism to remove people from the type of lifestyle. So it's, it's a very sensitive balance, obviously, but it is something that we're working on and moving forward, and the Chief Judge is extremely aware of the community's interest in this particular subject matter, and we obviously have been partners and will continue to be partners with everyone in order to make this a better community and to provide people a better quality of life.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I made that mention that, that it seems, I don't want to say one-sided, but the prostitutes are arrested, and the Johns are going out and having cocktails afterwards. We, thank you for your input. I think we need to, again, not revictimize the people that are being human trafficked, being trafficked. Thank you for being here.
Well, I appreciate the comments, because obviously, I'll tell you, just this week, we found the five victims that we call victims, the prostitutes, they were all still in jail. Every single John, obviously, had already bonded out. So you're absolutely right. Thank you.
Counsel and Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I think this is valuable information for our citizens to call, go to law enforcement, and, and help these people that are being victimized, held against their will, and, doing God-off things that no person should ever have to do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and thank everybody who came here today, including my colleague, Ms. Holt. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, now we move forward to public comment, just so that we get a good idea of how many folks are here for public comment. If you could please raise your hand if you intend on speaking. Okay, great. Come forward, three minutes at a time, please state your name, and then after that, we'll have the city's briefing on the CSX issue.
My name is Pastor Frank Williams, located 1112 East Scott Street, in the city of Tampa, Florida. You know, we hear a lot of comments coming from the police officers and everything, yeah, and we worrying about the Super Bowl. Why don't we worry about the people that's already here? The homeless people, and all this good stuff, but no, we don't worry about... I got the Holy Bible here, and that's why they say Holy Bible, and I'm a believer in God and believe in Jesus Christ. The thing about it, I'm gonna read some scripture to y'all out of the Book of First Corinthians, and I wish y'all pay close attention to it. I was coming out of First Corinthians, the sixth chapter, and I was going to start, I guess I start at the 14th verse, because, I try to hurry up, because y'all don't give me much time. They only give me about three seconds. "And God hath both raised up the Lord, and will also raise us up by His own power. Know ye not that your body are the members of Christ? Shall I then take the members of Christ and make them a member of the hollow, God forbid? What? Know ye not that he that is John to the hollow is one body? For two say it to me, say it to he. Shall we be one flesh? For he that is John unto the Lord is one spirit. Free from incitation, every sin that a man doeth is without his body; but he that committed felicitations sin against his own body." And the reason I'm reading this script here, what? Nineteenth verse, say, "What? Know ye not that your body is the temple of the Holy Ghost, which is in you, which ye have of God, and ye are not of your own? For ye are bought with a price; therefore glorify God in your body and in your spirit, which is of God." You know, we act like we own our own body. Our body is the Spirit of God, and we must respect the Spirit of God. Our body is holy, and we must not do all these sinful things, and got to understand, gays, homosexuals, bull daggers, and lovers of men, lovers of women, and all this stuff, it need to be abolished, whether you like it or not. We're not going into God's kingdom with these kind of attitudes and these kind of possibilities. We must understand, the Super Bowl could come here, and once it's come here, it's gone, but we're gonna be here, and we got to respect God Almighty forever, forever, and forever.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Our body is the temple of God. Please remember that.
Next, please. Thank you.
Manchusna, Tampa, Florida. I like to speak first, and I like to speak early, because what I like to do is, I like to inspire African people. I like to inspire older people, and I like to inspire youth. I like to inspire middle-aged people. I like to see them, let them see a real African, not a coward, not a bully, but a real African. And that's what this city council is. Address the city council, a bunch of cowards and bullies, nothing more, nothing less, and the people come here and talk about human trafficking. We're 26% of the population. They say, "Call someone, call the hotline." Call the hotline on all the pimping that all our politicians, the black politicians and the black Uncle Toms and the black Aunt Jemamas been getting for the last 100 years in this city. We're getting more human traffic than anybody else, plain and simple. White people want to have all the sense, but they evil and deceitful. Remember four years ago, they had the Zika virus in Brazil, when the Olympics was in Brazil? They had a South American virus. White folks want to have all the sense, killing the people's economy. And right now, the Olympics in the, in the Orient, now they got a new virus, coronavirus. White people want to have all the sense, and when you bring it to their attention, they want to do you dirty and do you wrong, and when you bring it to their attention, they want to shut you up, freedom of speech. Mister City Attorney, let's see the rules that are this and that and that, and how you speak and how you address the council. A garbage council, a bunch of cowards, plain and simple. They send a budget up here for a billion dollars, and the cowards do what? Give the black people some paint at a MFing park? A bunch of cowards. We're 26% of this population, and we want 26% of this budget. We're a black population that have been oppressed for 600 years, and we want our $600 trillion in reparations. We don't want this garbage talk y'all be talking, human trafficking, and who got a stolen car, and who stole spice, and who's this, and who's been prostituted, and we're 26% of the population, and nothing for us. Y'all want to be so smart, the white folks want to have all the sense. And when black people try to bring it to y'all's awareness, hey, y'all doing us wrong, oh no, shut up, do this, sit in the back, go to jail, be arrested. Man, I ain't no coward, and I never be. I'll always be an inspiration to African people. And you a coward, and there's seven cowards up there, because y'all scared of a mayor, and every last one of y'all scared of a mayor. Y'all cowards and bullies. Cowards and bullies, nothing more, nothing less. Human traffic, that.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Well, my name is Janelle Lavar Scott. In my native tongue, Hebrew, that means Yahweh is merciful to wash, gift of God. I'm a product of one of y'all incidents, where y'all sheriff office tried to rape me in my own house just this last year in October. My Facebook page is public for the whole world to see. All of y'all are my friends, including the Supreme Court, the White House, and the FBI. I got recordings that I don't put on there, where y'all have went deaf to. I done called the sheriff office, Deputy Sands, to no avail. On Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, I went to the River Church where they had a festival, and talked to Chad Cronister, who laughed in my face about the whole ordeal. I'm a disabled individual. My dad are military veterans. He served for this United States. Christopher Columbus claimed he came and founded America, Florida. But what God did, he caused all them storms to come and shift, and he brought it back to the Garden State, this Rosewood nation, this nation that cries with the blood of our ancestors. It's so much wickedness and perverseness that done went on in this nation, that God brought it like how y'all think y'all sun god gonna win. He brought it from the east to the west. Yeah, don't y'all sun god run, rise in the east, but he gonna set in the west. This nation of Babylon, the great Jezebel, yes, it's true. He finna wipe y'all clean, and I'm a witness to it. What y'all gonna say about that?
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Tough acts to follow. Hello, my name is Joe Manson. I'm the President of Practical Citizen Action, which is a nonprofit organization and the founder of the Cleanup Kennedy Initiative. I've spent the last few years delving very deeply into a specific type of human trafficking that occurs all around our country, and unfortunately, it is very prevalent here in Tampa Bay. That's what we call the illicit massage business. Very briefly, this involves setting up a business front with all of the corporations, renting space, securing business licenses, massage licenses, and everything you would need to run a legitimate massage establishment, and then using that location to engage in commercial sexual exploitation. In 2007, my group worked with the city council and the city attorney to draft and pass an ordinance that's goals were to make it harder for these illicit businesses to operate in the city. This, the county quickly followed suit and passed a complimentary ordinance. Because of the great work of our city council and the eagerness to address this issue, I was asked to come up to DC recently and sit on a panel of a summit for two days with experts from around the country, law enforcement, service providers, victim service providers, and other citizen activists, where we brainstormed and created tools, working groups, and best practices to be used in cracking down on illicit massage businesses in our cities. I would like to be a resource as we continue working in Tampa with the Super Bowl coming. I know, you know, there's some conflict on whether the Super Bowl actually increases human trafficking or not, you know, I heard people saying studies show that doesn't really increase that much, but we do have stories from victims who say that they were brought to cities for certain events, including the Super Bowl, so there's at least anecdotal evidence for that. So after all of our great work a few years ago, several of the illicit massage businesses did shut down here in Tampa, but unfortunately, there are still many active. So my organization has prepared the first of many open-source intelligence reports on the suspected illicit massage businesses still operating in this area of Tampa. A copy will be sent to all of your email addresses later on today, and it will also be available on the Cleanup Kennedy website, which is cleanupkennedy.org. I will warn that the, the reports do have some semi-graphic material that is sexual in nature. I tried to censor it as most as I could, and I will put a warning about any links that are in the report to please use caution when opening those links as well. Thank you for your time, and I'm Joe Manson from Cleanup Kennedy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Johnny Johnson. Hi, I'm Johnny Johnson. I feel we have a great opportunity to do something special here in Tampa in Hillsborough County, as being a lone life resident of Hillsborough County. I figure you think we come down here each week for, to bash and what have you, but our love for the city is very mutual, and it should be, but we have a lot to do, and I just wrote something. We supposed to be fighting for the same, we're supposed to be fighting for the same Hillsborough County, Tampa, I'm saying. Don't tell me you love this city, but my side of town is ugly and yours is pretty. We come down here every week asking for things you know we already need. A new fair old sidewalks and a pothole-free streets, like Twenty Second, Hillsborough. If you don't believe, take time out and come and see. You know the place you don't want, you don't want to allow your family to be. East Temple, been deaf in the dust for passive, for being passive and giving too much trust. Red line, gentrification, affordable houses, and not listening to us got us to fuss. Councilman Vera, Dean Figer, Miranda, Citro, Carson, Groo, and Manon Skarsgård. Let go your ego. We the people you work for, don't you know? I love this city, born and raised for sure. I want to work with you to help it grow. We can't leave out East Temple. That's a no-no. It's people with pride that live there whole life. They pay taxes, not asking for a free ride, just to man respect with integrity and no more lies. Or you just want us to close our mouth, lay down, and die. Well, the devil is alive. As long as we have breath in our body, we going to make sure East Temple strive. It's time, councilman, open your heart, soul, and mind. Let's work together to take East Temple from the bike of the line to the front. And that mean all of us come together doing something productive. We can sit down here every week and yell and choke each other out, but if no progress is being made, it's all in void. We have to learn to listen to each other to progress. This is one big city. We all up under the same umbrella. Again, you should be able to allow your family to ride through East Temple without interruption. How that's gonna happen, by all of us coming together to make some type of positive movement, listening, having integrity, understanding that we all is of the human race. We have to do something. All of y'all agree. I appreciate the ones that you do take time to come out and see what we come down here and fuss about, because it's relevant. It's things you can see and put your hands on and see that need to be done and changed. It's gonna take all of us communication. So we all need to just calm down, get our eyes together, and do what the citizens and the constituents want us to do, and it's move the city forward as one. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please.
Good morning. I'm Zulima Ramos with the National 501(c)(3) Swap, Sex Workers Outreach Project, and Local Tampa Collective Sex Worker Solidarity Network, both of which have a hotline where we receive calls directly from sex workers who don't feel comfortable calling law enforcement. Last year, the Tampa Police Department faced a lawsuit for excessive force after an officer ran over a local father who left a six-year-old child behind, after facing multiple reports of excessive force from residents in Ebor City and throughout Tampa last year. Also, in 2019, a suit was filed against the deputy and Hillsborough County Sheriff Chad Cronister by a woman who was shot by Hillsborough County Sheriff's Detective during an undercover operation in Brandon. In November of 2019, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department targeted and raided the workplace of 28 women and girls who were selling sex, or in the latter case, being trafficked as they were underage. To my knowledge, all 28 were put in cages and are being prosecuted, and many of those women and girls will subsequently have a prostitution record, which will lower their legal job prospects and are likely to subject them to more imprisonment in the future. Workers and sex trafficking victims alike, they deserve better. They deserve amnesty, affordable housing, accessible medical care, and the like. Sex work is a non-violent survival strategy, and we should be giving funds, we should not be giving funds and power to institutions and departments like TPD and Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department that continue to put our lives in danger due to their implicit bias, lack of cultural competency training, and lack of de-escalation training. Criminalizing sex workers who are consenting adults, conducting independent business harms sex trafficking victims who are being forced, coerced, or underage. It's significantly easier to identify and provide assistance to genuine victims of trafficking when they're no longer afraid that seeking assistance from law enforcement will get them thrown in a cage for prostitution. There are many cases throughout this country where one sex worker will get charged for trafficking another after calling police for help, after being assaulted by a violent client. Sex workers and sex trafficking victims need comprehensive labor rights and medical amnesty, not rescue by ill-informed law enforcement. If clients weren't criminalized, they too could report when they discovered an underage trafficking victim when they were just seeking a consensual, a sex worker. In addition to international experts like Amnesty International and other groups, they support full decriminalization, and this keeps everyone safer, including the World Health Organization, UN, AIDS, and the International Labor Organization. If you have any questions, I sent you all an email yesterday, so you're welcome to follow-up, and thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good morning. Connie Burton. As this nation, you know, come to a close of recognizing African history, just the whistling of a, from a child led to the lynching and murder, the brutalization of Emmett Till. And so, we have now the Emmett Till anti-lynching legislation, sixty-five years later. The Jubilee, the march on the Edmund Pettus Bridge is in full gear this week. And part of that history of those that were just wanting voting, voting rights, is the marching over the bridge to be faced with dolls, taints, police officers. So our relationship gonna always be different. So when we see this this morning, and your celebration, it kind of almost like a, like a white citizen council, because things have not been resolved in our community in regards to community-police relation. That's the reality. But what I'm down here this morning is because of item number two, and when that report is given, that it's not a shell game. Just recently, on top of the Housing Authority moving now to demolish Robles Park, they got a plan for that, why they got a pile of dirt over there in West Tampa, and they can give a report of how they're advancing more available housing, and they're doing more than the one-for-one replacement, but they have a waiting list of over 20,000. That's for people who even show up. So on top of that, and we all know, like Brother said, don't take us to be stupid. Baseball is coming, so you know what has to happen? The elimination of people that's in proximity to where this great vacuum of economic wealth it should exist, or you want it to exist, in Ebor City. Three hundred and fifty families in Tampa Park apartment that will not receive any type of federal subsidy unless you have a plan. You have to have a plan now. Three hundred and fifty people just at the crust of the Super Bowl has to find housing where? The Housing Authority has already identified that they only have vouchers for thirty-two family, so we, what we don't want to hear is that we got down payment assistance when people are going to need way more than that. We need for this city council, this mayor, to move fast, quickly, in a hurry, so we can provide a housing that will ensure that people that's working some of these jobs, that's gonna sweep the floors at the Super Bowl and clean the bathrooms.
I'll give you twenty seconds.
We need to have somewhere to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning.
And if I may, ma'am, after Bishop Patty, is anyone else here for public comment? Okay, okay, one more. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I'd like to start off by thanking Councilman Guido Mascotta for coming and visiting with Trinity in Faith for our Black History, letting me know that you are interested in who we are. On the backside of that, I would like to give some suggestion. This council can freeze any more building until we can make sure that people have a place to live. You can do what Councilman Frank Riddick did when these same people were being forced out of their home. He crossed party lines. He was able to get state representative at that time, Sean Harrison, them, to write a letter to HUD and stop the move-out of the people, the masses of the people. What I'm saying this council can do, you could do the same thing and say that no more, no tear-down in public housing until we can be assured that people are placed in homes. The reason I'm here to sound off this warning, because people are not going to just simply lay down and die because they have no place to live. They will take to the street, there will be a revote, they will prefer to go to jail so that they can have a place, a roof over their heads. So we can get in front of this right now, this council, you could say, "We putting a freeze on everything until the citizens have a place to live." There's a mother say she have a three-bedroom apartment, she's paying three, a nine hundred dollars in Tampa Park. I know you have no control over what private citizens do to sell their property, but you can control what happened around us. So when people come saying they want a bill, you say, "Well, how much is that? How many units or whatever is going to be put, set aside so that people can find a decent place to live?" Now, many people will not have credit, good credit that's living, these three hundred-something people that's been thrown out, they don't have the credit, they don't have the down payment, they don't have anything, but what they do have is life in their bodies, meaning that them and their children need a safe place to stay. So this council, we're asking you to get in front of it, like we're talking about bringing baseball, we can find money, we talking about the Super Bowl, beautifying the city of Tampa, then it's a shame, it's a crying shame that we would sit here and allow families to be put out on the street. But I make it very clear, because I don't even feel good today. I need to be in my bed, but when I woke up and seen the travesty of what is going on, and nobody is saying anything, there's a problem here in the city of Tampa. We are not the great, next great city, but we can be if we decide that we gonna do not just for one, but for all. So city council, get in front of it, do it now. The mayor already know we need some homes, and we don't need just rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, it's Mary Lou Bailey. This is a really complicated, dehumanizing, connected set of issues. It's really, really troubling. The comment I want to make as a citizen is, where are the invited speakers? They're all gone. Why didn't they stay and listen to public comment? Could council please tell them that is sending a big message, that they don't have enough respect to sit here and listen to the public comment on the issues that they say they're so impassioned about? I'm really troubled by that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now with public comment being finished, I see it was Ms. Duncan here, if you wish to come forward with your staff.
Yes, good morning, City Council. Jean Duncan, Infrastructure Mobility. Thank you for giving me a few moments to come in this morning. I wanted to give you a situation report based on all of the...
And Ms. Duncan, if I may, I apologize. Just that we'll take questions and comments after the completion of Ms. Duncan's presentation. I know Councilwoman Carlson wishes to say something to anyone afterwards, but just, so you can go forth. Go ahead.
Sure, and I'll be brief. Just wanted to give some feedback to y'all because of the great concerns many of us had, the bad experiences many of us had yesterday with just really unacceptable traffic congestion that we experienced in certain parts of the city, particularly South Tampa, because of road closures that occurred. But I do want to say, we've got some good news. We were able to really make some headway with the CSX leadership yesterday of really emphasizing the need to work together with that agency and have better coordination, clearly that's needed after what many of us experienced yesterday, and some of which is still going on today. Just to let you know, we were able to accelerate some of the roadway openings that were very troubling, particularly Euclid, El Prado, Bay to Bay, those are all open now. We had some other openings south of Gandy with Iowa and Oklahoma. We've asked for the Cleveland-Platte One Way Pair to be a priority, that's being paved today. We're gonna get an update a little later today on when that would be open. Should be sometime tomorrow, but we'll get the details on that. We've asked for Pearl, south of Gandy, to be a priority. So we'll have a few more updates. We've put out a traffic advisory with all this information this morning of all the openings that are available now, and we'll work with CSX to see the completion of the openings of the handful of roadways that are still closed. But I want to give you my full assurance that we're gonna go back and look and see how did we get to this point with this coordination, what were the fragile cracks in our process that we could shore up on and fill those gaps? We do not want this kind of situation happening again. It's an obviously, clearly, health, welfare, safety issue for all of us to have just unacceptable gridlock, and so we're gonna make sure that we can work as closely as possible with CSX and any other agency that comes in and has work that's impacting her right away, so that we can avoid having people be extremely inconvenienced, or even in a worse situation of having to get home and get medication, or whatever the case may be. So I'm committing that we're gonna do better, work more closely, and continue the updates, putting those out throughout the day-to-day on social media and our Tampa Gov. website. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay, Councilwoman Carlson, Councilwoman Dinkfelder, Councilwoman Citro, then Councilwoman Mascotta, and Councilwoman Miranda. Go ahead, sir.
I heard there was a problem with my mic, so if I could go out, if somebody could wave at me, please.
CSX.
You know, I went to take my kids to school a couple mornings ago, and I faced the same thing everybody else faced, and then picking up kids yesterday, we were two hours late picking them up. It was horrific. Somebody I saw online called this Carmageddon. It was, it was just an awful situation. There were accidents, there were people stuck, the economic impact was huge. It absolutely should not happen again, and we need to make sure it doesn't happen again. But the thing that I would caution us all to do is not to start the blame game. If we start blaming CSX, or the city, or whomever, we're not gonna get to the solution. The solution is that this was a communication problem. And to make it clear to everybody, the residents in South Tampa asked us to, asked the city to ask CSX to do this work. The problem was the coordination of when and when it was staged, and the communication with residents. And the work had to be done because tires were getting popped because people were getting splinters in them, and the railroad ties were coming out. It was a huge problem for drivers, especially south of Gandy. They could barely drive over their, over their railroad tracks. So it had to be done. I've gotten a lot of emails and calls, and you all have too, that we should just blame CSX. CSX is a partner. They came in and did this because we wanted them to do it, and the residents wanted them to do it. And so, we should be thanking them, but we should also ask them to communicate better with us, and we also need the city to communicate. I had a couple conversations with Chief of Staff last night, and he couldn't come this morning, but there is a, there was a process that he used in Pinellas County where you set up an email so that a partner like CSX can email, and it will go to several city employees at the same time. The problem is that the way CSX did notify the city in advance, it wasn't probably enough notice, and what happened is the way the email looked, I haven't seen it, but apparently the way the email looked, it was not, it did not rise the level of importance that it should have because of the way it was written. And had somebody from CSX called and said, "Hey, this is potentially gonna be a big problem, and we're gonna do all of them at once." I'm sure that city staff would have asked them not to do that, and it would have been handled differently. And so, the Chief of Staff, working with the Transportation Department, is gonna work on the communication, not with just CSX, but with our other partners. The second thing, though, is that we've talked over and over again here about the need for communication in other things besides the mayor's office. The communication team around the mayor's office does a fantastic job. They communicate regularly, there's lots of information going out. The problem is, and you know, this is my industry, so I look at cities and governments and see what they need. The problem is that we don't have enough communication people. The Communication Department is not robust enough. And in particular, we need communication processes specifically dedicated to public works. We have three billion dollars in projects just with the Pipes Program, and I don't remember, what is the stormwater, a couple billion more?
Yes.
The... It, it, the, if we do public engagement and public information in the right way, it will cost us several million dollars to outsource that. What we should do is set up a, a Public Works Communication Department that's a robust department that reports to Jean and, uh, and, um, and, and this is for water and transportation so that we can respond quickly, so that we can work with our partners to get information out there. And what we need is, is communication assets. We need links to, uh, website posts, we need graphics, we need, uh, you know, diagrams of what things are gonna look like. And when the Communication Department has enough time, they do a great job with that. In this case, we don't have enough staff, we don't have a team, a, a large enough team dedicated to public works and we can't, we can't respond in, as well as we could in, in emergencies if we had that team. And so, I don't know when you want to make a motion, but, um, I want to make a motion at the end that we, um, that we ask the city to look into creating a Communication Department dedicated to public works uh, to work with the, uh, the Mayor's Office Communication Department, uh, for branding and everything. But we, we desperately need to communicate more effectively with the community and we need to work with our partners to communicate. And we, as city council members, need assets that we can use to communicate as well. Thank you.
And, and Councilmen, I usually take motions at the end, but given the, um, uh, importance of this, uh, issue as to yesterday, I can take that now. If you, we can take it at the end of discussion. That's what I was gonna say, yeah, at the end of discussion, but we'll take your motion. That's, that's fine, sir. Uh, next is Councilman Dingfelder.
Good morning, Jean.
Good morning.
And thanks for coming over to discuss, uh, this very important, uh, matter, really a matter of public safety. Um, because, uh, thank goodness, uh, there, these intersections are opening back up and I haven't heard about anything tragic, uh, yet, but it, but it could have been. I think we skated by on this one. On January twenty-eighth, um, and, and you've seen this email, I'm sure, and Vic as well. On January twenty-eighth, CSX sent an email to the city and, and, and I got a copy of it. I think that's the one that Bill was alluding to as well. Eight city employees, not including you and not including Vic. So, you guys are off the hook as far as I'm concerned, but eight city employees got a copy of that. And, um, and, and unfortunately, and, and I want to use something that, that we see at the airports and elsewhere, is like, see something, say something, um, because that's what didn't happen. Um, if, you know, and I'm sure that good, hard-working people in your departments and elsewhere who looked at that probably shrugged their shoulders and thought somebody else was gonna handle it. But at the end of the day, I don't think anybody reached out to CSX like they should have on January twenty-eighth and, and said, "Wow, this is problematic because we, we realized that work had to get done, as Bill mentioned, but to close down virtually every single crossing from Ebor City, it's not just South Tampa." Uh, I was reminded by a friend of mine, it's, you know, we're, sometimes we get South Tampa-centric. Um, it's not just South Tampa, it's, you know, Ebor City through downtown and then into South Tampa and South of Gandy. Um, this affected probably half of, at least half of the city. I, I was stuck in interstate traffic this morning that I believe was probably related to, to this. Uh, so now, we're talking about federal stuff. But anyway, Jean, I, I, I know you, I know you, we've worked together for many years. I know you're gonna get to the bottom of this and I know it will never happen again. Um, but I would just urge all city employees, it's better to, it's better to say something. It's better, when you have a question, you know, step up to the plate and say something and, you know, and, 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 and it's better to say something and, and then having a supervisor say, "Yeah, we got that covered, don't worry about it." But in this case, nobody did. Nobody stepped up and said something and that's why we, we, we ended up with quite the mess. Quite the mess. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman, uh, Citro withdrew, so we'll do Councilman Iskaku, Miranda, and then Councilman Goode. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, of course, like, like all of us up here, I receive many phone calls. One person said, "This is worse than Gasparilla traffic," as he was trying to leave his business on Kennedy. I'm glad that there were no issues with emergency vehicles and life and death situations because that would have been inevitable. You know, there was no way out. I avoided the area completely. As I left City Hall, I saw how Kennedy was and I just stayed away. Um, you know, it was, it was poor communication. I'm not blaming anybody here, but those that did see the email should have known all these crossings were being closed all at once. You know, that's a recipe for disaster and it was, because people, it took them hours to get home. So, you know, we can learn from this. Next time, we have to be proactive rather than reactive, because again, it could have been a life and death situation. Uh, thankfully, it was not, but, um, there, there was no escape. You know, I mean, it was gridlocked, it was Tampa's parking lot yesterday, worse than Gasparilla, uh, from what I heard and from what I saw. So, uh, thank you for being here. Um, thankfully, this was a, a short event. I know that, you know, roads were opening up, uh, at six AM and I've been following the Twitter feed, City of Tampa Traffic, and City of Tampa is retweeting and sharing that information. So, you know, it's a, it's a learning experience. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, yesterday in the afternoon, I received a call from a former investigative reporter of the, one of the TV stations. And he asked me the same question, "Do you realize what's going on?" I said, "Realize what's going on about what?" And he says, "We have a problem." And I still didn't know what he was talking about because he hadn't explained it. And when he told me what was going on, I couldn't believe the lack of common sense on one party and the distribution of information of the other party. So, blame, I'm not pointing fingers at no one, but what I'm saying is, how can you send just emails and you don't call nobody on the phone? Are we getting to the point in life that we will rely on emails on everything? What about public safety? If something were to happen, and more likely it could have happened, maybe it did happen and we don't know about it, that someone had a, a condition where he or she had to be taken to a hospital, how do you get in there, how do you get out? Even if you get in there, it doesn't guarantee you're gonna get out. The lack of time and safety is the first priority of all of us. And, and when I realized and it settled, I called people who have a higher position than I do and I, I asked. And they were also to the same point as I was. They were taken by surprise, to be honest with you. And they did do something, they tried to solve the problem immediately, but when you have that kind of chaotic situation where just maybe a mile from here, there's a school and it takes you an hour and a half, two hours to get to the kid when the kid's supposed to get out at three and it's six o'clock, you still only found your son or daughter, it becomes more than just public safety. So, can you imagine what happened to this city if we don't have any information? And if you imagine if only we rely on one information, which is the internet or sending an email and something goes wrong and you can't communicate? We must have more communication than just email. There's gotta be a directive given from the top down on a system where you have to do this at all the department, including maybe the chairman or other council members who are advised of, at least advised, and given a phone call to somebody to disseminate more of that information. It just takes a little bit more of common sense, which is something they don't teach at school. I hate to say that. There's no university that gives you a degree in common sense. And all I'm asking is for both sides to understand, those that receive and those that send, that there's more communication to do in life than just sending an email, which sometimes anybody can send you an email, it's not factual. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode and Councilman Citro.
Gentlemen, we, you've all brought up good points and I said this from day one on this council. We have a lack of communication problem within the city. In all departments. You know, as the elected body for a district and these gentlemen have constituents as well, you know, I get knocks at my door, "Council, what's going on at thirty-fourth Hill Springs?" I get phone calls, seven o'clock in the morning, "Council, we got a dead body around the corner." But yet, we've been investigating something for hours. We have a fire in downtown Tampa, major fire. I don't know about it till the next morning. Did I read in the paper? We had a possible shooting, we thought a school shooting, we were at council and we don't say we had a shooting in the school. But I was able to call one major who's always, a guy who will give answers, not afraid to tell what's going on. They said, "No, there was a, 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 shots fired in the area." We are the city council, we have a district. And when incidents happen in our district, we need to be notified. Yes, people answer to the mayor, we understand that, we understand that policy, whatever. But when incidents happen, major happens in our district, we should be getting a telephone call, a text saying, "Councilman, this is happening in your district," so we don't get more of the phone calls and I've got no answer. I don't even know the investigatory, uh, scope of it. I just need to know, yeah, someone was, was shot, and such and such, and they died. I don't even know the investigator, that's, that's what department do, whatever. But I can tell the constituency, yes, there's something going on, it's safe, they've got things under control. So, when Mr. Carlson does make, because I asked Mr. Shelby, he might have forgot because he was busy that day, in reference to, uh, he was meeting with Ms. Grimes about communication. I never got that back, but things happen, uh, and again, slope ups do fall. But, uh, at the end of his motion, I'm gonna ask that whatever he makes me a minute because we gotta have a system that this council is notified when major incidents happen in this city from police, fire, and all departments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm, I'm going to echo everything that my, my comrades here have said, my fellow council members. Uh, it, it's, it's one thing that we asked the citizens of Tampa that are gonna do some sort of construction that are going to affect people around them to give notice. I think this could have been very easily handled had CSX given notice, better notice. Not to us, excuse me, more especially to us, but also to the citizens. Putting up big plaques, "This is how things are going to go. We need to do work on this, this, and this. Sorry to inconvenience you, but these are necessary repairs." Just like our citizens of Tampa are made to do if they're going to do any type of construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Thank you, and, and just, and before we take, uh, Councilman Carlson's motion, you know, some things, I echo a lot of what, what was said here entirely collectively, uh, but Councilman Miranda began on something, which was the notice. Let me ask you, the only notice that we can identify, that we can speak of at this time is, was it a January twenty-eighth email? I think that's it?
I don't have all the particulars of the full communication, but I believe there, there certainly was an email on that date. Uh, what transpired from that point on specifically, where I've asked to, to see what that process was? Because clearly, we want to improve that process, uh, and I agree with, with all of you on term, in terms of communication. We, we've got to improve internal, external with our other agencies, as well as our stakeholders and you obviously are all key stakeholders. So, we're looking back to see, what was that process that occurred from that first email that is now well-known? What are those gaps that occurred? And we will make changes and we will get it improved, absolutely.
And, and I ask that because when something is, is gonna happen like that, that's so significant, I think that, um, entities like CSX owe a duty to follow up. You know, to follow up. I mean, I, I'm an attorney, Councilman Dingfelder's an attorney and we've handled, I'm sure, time-limited demand cases on, uh, where, you know, there's a demand letter sent and, and then you never hear back from the attorney because they're trying to set you up. Obviously, obviously, that's not happening with CSX, but you send one letter, you make a demand, it's gotta be met by X date, and you never hear from them again because they, they want you to, uh, uh, not respond properly. Uh, given what happened, follow-up calls need to happen, follow-up emails going, "Hey, you know, we never heard back from the city of Tampa. I, I wonder if it was maybe missed." So, certainly, follow-ups should have happened, I think, on the part of CSX with the information that I presently see. And I'm commenting with the information as I, uh, uh, know it today, uh, here today. But, uh, I was just surprised that there was no additional follow-ups, so, you know. And, and yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, the two emails I've seen was to the city, um, was, uh, January twentieth and February third. Um, and, and in regard to CSX, um, I agree, we, we, you know, they should treat us better, but the reality is, as we learned in law school, you know, there, there's, there's God, there's the United States of America, and then there's the railroads. And the states and the cities fall under it. Unfortunately, that's been the way it's been for like a couple hundred years, ever since they invented railroads. Um, and I think that goes to their heads. So, it's unfortunate and maybe, uh, Jean just told me this morning that CSX has some new corporate officers. Apparently, there's already, as of yesterday, better communication. So, I'll give CSX the benefit of the doubt, maybe they're gonna improve, but I wouldn't hold our breath. So, we have to do our part to be proactive and if, you know, with, with CSX on these issues.
Yes, sir, well said. Uh, Councilman Carlson, if you wish to make your motion, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
How long are the same routes? It, when you look at the volume of closings of those streets, uh, one day all the time, that affect a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand trips of automobiles. Just think of that anywhere. It's like closing down, um, I-75. What happens? And no one, they, I mean, I'm gonna ask for that request to close them all down and they're expecting a yes? Is that the mentality that we have in this country? I can tell you other things, and I will now that I thought about it, the closing of streets in the city. I understand you got to do things for the city, to put sewers and underlines and this, I understand all that. But when you close a city for a private practicing individual for seven months without telling anybody, you shouldn't be working in the city. That happened. But what I'm seeing now is the lack of both entities, not so much the city. I'm not blaming the city and I'm not blaming the other entity. But when you send one email or the same email for a week and you don't get an answer, you shouldn't call somebody? When a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand cars can't move, do you know the frustration people get? People half crazy now. When you put two hundred thousand people in a car, what do you think they're gonna do? They're gonna go nuts because everybody in our society wants a thing now, today, done now, right now, instantaneously. It can't happen that way. And, and I appreciate, but it's your responsibility, Ms. Duncan, to make sure that this dissemination of facts is given to everyone. I guess you're the chief now of this division, so welcome to the new world. And I appreciate you, I appreciate what you've done in the past, but in the future, just for clarity, the stakeholders have, both sides have to understand what's happening. And now, you have chaos and that's exactly what happened. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Carlson.
No, I'm just gonna second your motion.
Uh, two quick, two quick comments and a, and a motion. Um, agreeing with my colleague, Mr. Miranda, um, um, there's, um, there's, there's a lot of communication that needs to be done. We're gonna be spending, uh, four billion or whatever to rip up most of the streets of Tampa, especially in South Tampa over the next few years. And we need a robust Communication Department to reach out to them. That's gonna be all on us. And I think one of the reasons why you have this position is because you will look at it in an integrated way and make sure that the, the roads and the, and the undergrounding and everything works together. Uh, the second thing, the second comment is, um, Councilman Goode's talked about informing us and happy to accept, uh, a friendly amendment. But, um, yesterday, um, Councilman Miranda mentioned that a former reporter, I, I don't know if you got a call from the same one, but I got a call from Mike Deason. And the way I found out about the email was from Mike Deason. And the way I found out about the, uh, the, the traffic was I got stuck in it myself, but then I had tons of calls, friends and constituents calling me. And there has to be some response mechanism. You mentioned the fire and other things. I, I saw it on social media, but I didn't know what we were supposed to do about it. There, there has to be, um, in the, in, in, if we create a new Communication Department, whether, there has to be some mechanism to inform us and give us the assets we can use to inform our constituents. So, I'd like to make a motion to ask staff to study the possibility of creating a Public Works Communication Department that would report to the Administrator of Infrastructure Mobility. The Communication Department would focus on, uh, sorry, the Public Works Communication Department would focus on public engagement, public education, public information, and customer communication.
Second. And, um, and Councilman Goode, does that satisfy your friendly amendment, sir?
No, sir, we need to make sure that all departments, you know, police, fire, when there are major incidents, we need to make sure they're notifying us when things happen in our district and not being notified or citizens notify us the next day. I wake up and, uh, so, uh, but I would like to say before I, the amendment, I would like to thank Chief John Bennett. He did send a text out.
Yes.
So, he was on it. He was on it. One thing I can say, he gets on it. So, he did send a text and me letting us know that it was a problem in the city. So, I wanna give a shout-out to him for doing what he did, because I had no idea until I started getting all those calls about it. So, I wanna thank him. But, uh, to, to amend that motion, I, I would like to amend it to all departments that are notifying us in reference to major incidents that pertain in the city and into our districts. It, you know, something may occur in mine, but may occur, but we still need to know what's going on.
If we add the amendment to say something like, "And to, to notify, uh, council members in, in a prompt manner or something..."
Departments, including council members.
And, and to, to, um, notify, um, council members and departments in a, in a timely, in a timely way.
Is that okay, sir?
Yeah, and the reason I say that, just the other day, we had a, an incident on Forty-third Street. I mean, I, we had tons of citizens out there and I didn't really know anything until I started getting calls. I, I went out there to the scene because they were demanding I come out there. I went to the scene. So, it's, it's imperative that people understand that, yes, we have two different houses, but at times, those houses kind of come together a little bit because... a little bit because people are looking for their council members, that's who they call. So I think I can take that motion, making sure that all, uh, uh, departments notify, police, fire, they will notify us when there may incident occur in the city.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson with a friendly amendment accepted by Councilman Goode, seconded by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan, again, thank you and your staff for taking this heat.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, and yes, sir. Yeah, um, is anybody here, I, I, ma'am, I see you, is anybody here to publicly comment on this specific item? We probably should have taken it before the vote, but that's all right. It, ma'am, or, go ahead. Anyone else here?
Uh, good, good morning. My name's Lorraine Parino, and I wanna give my two cents about what happened yesterday. Um, yesterday was Ash Wednesday. If you're Catholic, it's a holy day of obligation. I was gonna attend the 12:10 mass at Christ the King. I live on Davis Island, I was gonna go, I left an hour early, I left at eleven o'clock. I got as far, I went down Cleveland to, uh, got as far as Willow, and all the cars are turning around. I see these huge chunks of concrete right in front of the railroad track. Thought, well, I'll just go down Willow to Swan. So I went to Swan, Swan was closed, and then everybody starts following the lead car. We're about ten cars following, hoping that he knows where he's going. We wound up on Morrison. I went, I finally went down Morrison to Bay Shore, all the way down to El Prado. It took me an hour. I was beginning to think I'm not gonna make the mass, you know, and, um, it was just unbelievable. On the way home, I went down Swan, I thought I'd go down Swan to MacDill. By the time I got to, uh, the railroad crossing there on MacDill, passed right by Chicharranzones, the railroad crossing was open, but the barrier was going up and down. So you had a line of cars all the way from Swan, almost to Bay Shore, in both directions. And I'm thinking, y'all may not wanna lay blame, but I would like to lay blame on CSX, because what bright light over there thought it was a good idea to close that whole line, like Charlie, Miranda said, you know, the whole line? Who thought that was a good idea? I mean, I can see maybe one here and one there, and then the next weekend, another one here, another one there, but the whole line? And I was gonna come up and suggest that you all find, I don't know if it's within your capability, but somebody needs to be held accountable for this, and to me, CSX should be fined if, if it's in your power to do that, because I've never, I've lived in Tampa all my life, I've never seen anything like that, and to think that that was a good idea, that somebody came up with that was a good idea to close all those railroad crossings? I mean, what did they think people were gonna do to get where they were going? Anyway, I just think somebody should be held accountable, either in the city, both, the city and the CSX, because like, like Mr. Miranda said, it was thousands and thousands of people who were put out. That was just one experience of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you make it to church? Did you make it to church?
I got there just as mass was starting.
Good, well, I'm glad, good for you.
An hour.
There you go.
I hope you prayed for us, too.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, uh, next we move onward to item number two for workshops.
Good morning, council members. I believe this is the item dealing with, uh, the housing, since we've switched whom, it's number two, yes, housing, contracting. This deals with the, uh, prior workshop you all had regarding what the city can do to assist for the re-entry or second chance for persons who have a criminal, uh, background, they've been convicted of a crime or have had some conviction in their past. And, uh, I know you all had a discussion at your last workshop. I've invited several members from the city administration here this morning in the areas of HR, housing, and contracting to, to educate you all and to kinda discuss how, what the city's current ordinances and policies and guidelines are in those areas, and what we're doing to try to assist folks have, to have a second chance, and, uh, also to discuss where, where we may be able to improve those, those things. I, um, I would note, you know, at the outset, that this is a fairly complicated area, and we, we need to be careful in legislating or coming up with guidelines and policies that we don't end up with unintended consequences that could have a negative impact on our citizens, or our contracting process, or our hiring process. Um, and this also dovetails into several of the mayor's initiatives that have come out for the housing affordability and workforce development. So we will, so we will be coming forward in the future with concrete changes to ordinances and other things to, to facilitate that, because this dovetails with several of the mayor's initiatives as well. We do not have those this morning because it is a complex issue, but I did think it'd be helpful for council to hear what we are doing now, and what we're, what we're thinking about tweaking in the, in the near future. So I'm gonna ask, um, Vanessa McCleary to come up first and discuss the city's current housing, uh, program, the horrible housing.
And Mr. Massey, if you don't mind, uh, saying your name, I...
Sorry, I apologize.
You're all right.
I'm Massey, Deputy City Attorney. I was trying to do this quickly because Mr. McCleary needs to get out by eleven thirty.
You're cool, thank you, sir. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, Vanessa McCleary, Housing and Community Development Manager for the City of Tampa. Um, so within the Housing and Community Development Division, we have the Office of Human Rights. Um, with our community development section, we are housing folks that have criminal backgrounds. Um, a lot of them end up being homeless because of their criminal backgrounds, and so we do understand that issue. Within the Office of Human Rights, we are enforcing the, uh, fair housing requirements, um, because we have a contract with the federal government to do fair housing and employment, um, discrimination cases. We can take those, um, for cases within the city. Um, for fair housing, you have desperate impact, um, at the federal level, which, under the current administration, is being rolled back, but because of the desperate impact, we started doing workshops with landlords to educate them and to say, you know, you can't just deny someone housing because they have a criminal background. You really need to look at that criminal background and see, does it really make sense for you to not have that person living in your complex, or in your home, or, um, your rental unit. Um, so through those workshops, we have been able to get landlords to take another look at, um, folks that have criminal backgrounds to actually ask questions. Um, we're continuing to have those workshops, even though at the federal level, they're kind of rolling that back, we're just moving forward with that. We have a fair housing symposium that's gonna be coming up in April, where we're educating, um, property managers, realtors, property owners, um, bankers on, um, fair housing rights. Um, with our programs, we provide rental assistance, we help folks to find units to rent when they have criminal backgrounds. We work with THHI in the county and do an expungement clinic where we try to get people's criminal records expunged so that it doesn't have an impact, because we know that criminal history, um, has a major impact on a person's quality of life. It can stop them from getting housing, it can stop them from getting employment, and really causes recidivism. So, um, that is something that we do work on now, and we are looking at, uh, making some changes to the human rights ordinance and doing some updates, and we'll be coming back to you with that at a later date.
Councilman Goode, thank you.
Couple of questions. Uh, where's the Human Rights Office located at? Uh, who knows about it, as far as the communication, uh, with our residents, especially when you look at the city has broken up, who's mostly affected, or certain sections mostly affected? So I'd like to know where's it located at, uh, how are we getting the word out to the people? And I'd like to know about these workshops to educate these landlords or these property managers, and when are they held, and do this, does the city need to put in some type of policy ordinance that mandate that property managers or who, people who are renting, come to a workshop to understand what the rights of those who are trying to get housing?
So, um, the Office of Human Rights is located at Lemon Street, it's within the Housing and Community Development Division. Um, we have brochures, flyers, we have done commercial ads, we've even had ads in the, um, movie theaters. Um, we are constantly there at all of the community events that we do, and it's similar to what's happened with community development. A lot of people don't know about our programs until they actually need them. Some people could be sitting right in front of a billboard and not know that, you know, this is what we do. It's until someone needs the services, but if you reach out, I mean, we work with a lot of different community partners to get the information out. We've paid for newspaper ads, but you know that those are expensive, TV ads are also expensive, but, um, we push it out now through social media, and we now, um, thanks to council and to the new administration, we have an outreach person, and so we're working on some better means of outreach.
What about these workshops, as far as you said, the landlords or the, uh, property managers, properties?
So we do, um, they're scheduled, they're on our website. Um, we just, the Human Rights Investigation Supervisor, Patricia Newton, um, she was doing a lot of those workshops. She left in July, and we were just recently able to hire, and so one of the things I wanted to do today was to introduce Maurice Foster, who is the new Human Rights Investigation Supervisor, so we'll be ramping up on our, um, outreach efforts, um, now that he is on board. He is, have you been here a month?
A month.
Yeah, he's one month on the job.
And, and, and lastly, when we talk about policy or ordinances, uh, do, do you think it might be advantageous to maybe this council look at, or have, uh, legal look into, maybe we have some type of ordinance policy that if you are a landlord or a renter, you must go to a workshop before you can be renting, or, or, or do you think that will help us so people can know what the rights they have as a landlord or property manager, and the rights of citizens?
So at, um, one point, there, the, um, code enforcement had a rental registry, and, um, landlords were required to register their properties and go through a class, and we had difficulty with implementing that program. Would I like to see something like that? Yes, but there would be the unintended consequence of, there are so many rental units within Tampa, you would need quite a few staff people just to do that training, um, just to manage all of the, the individuals that would come through there, as well as the landlords that would have to go through that. That would be a major undertaking.
You're saying a yes, but you're saying we, we may need to do some other things, so maybe outsourcing, since we do a lot of outsourcing in the city, maybe that might be a, a caveat to that.
So, I would, the amount of money that you would spend to outsource that could mean several houses or rental units for people, and I would rather put people into units. I think that for, um, you know, because if you're gonna put something like that, you can't be discriminatory, which means you have to put it on all the units. So whether it's four thousand dollars a month, or it's five hundred dollars a month, you would need to put it on all of them. We have a lot of rentals. We offer the workshops, when we offer rental assistance, the folks that go through our rental assistance program are mandated to go through those workshops. Um, the landlords that we work with, we've been educating them. Um, I'd rather have the resources to be able to provide the assistance, and through that assistance, there we do mandate that training, and I would rather do it that way.
I'm just looking at, you know, when I hear in communities, I can't get a place because I have a small past indiscretion. So, and, and, and again, uh, when I look at the assets that we do have in this city, when I talk about rehab and things like that, I think, you know, we look at our, some of our CRA properties, I think some of those, those, those things need to come into play to, where we can get people in housing who have past indiscretions, because we own the property, we own the land, and I, I just think that we've gotta find another way, uh, uh, and to me, rehab is a better way to try to do a lot of these projects, but we just had a conversation out there, and I, I just think that for our program in the city, and, and I know we, we believe it's working, I believe it's working for a few, but not working for the mass, and I think we need to look at trying to make sure we can find a way to kinda curtail dollars to a separate fund of rehab, and maybe we can help this problem of people not being able to get a place, because now we can do some other things to get them housing, get them off, uh, uh, from being homeless. Do you not agree?
I do agree. The issue is funding.
Anything else? And, and Councilman Dingfelder, then Councilman Carlson.
Um, let me defer to Bill because my issue is not specifically on point, but it's related to Vanessa, so go ahead, Bill.
I think if mine is, too. Um, when you and I first met in the beginning, you said the same thing you just said to Councilman Goode, which is the issue is funding, and, um, you know, we made a motion to, um, study the possibility of using, uh, CRA money for housing, and we'll talk about that. I think it's on the next agenda for the next CRA meeting. The other thing, and we can bring it up again later, but the other thing I was batting about with, uh, Michelle Van Loon and, um, and Carol Post, is, um, uh, we just had some, one of the CRA managers leave, and I didn't know until afterwards that he actually was a housing expert, um, and, uh, it, it gave me the idea, why don't, if, if possible, could we, I know you need staff, too, is it possible that we could hire with CRA money, uh, a housing person who can specifically help with the CRA housing issues, because we really need to focus more CRA money on that. So anyway, I know the ideas are just batting around, but, um, I wanna do whatever we can to support you, um, and I know as you go through the mayor's budget, she set it as a priority and has a plan, and our committee came back with lots of good ideas, but from the things that we might control more like CRA, I wanna make sure we support you, too. So please give us all your best ideas so we can do that. Thank you.
And we've been worked, I've been working a lot with Michelle and with the CRA, so that's been great, the interaction and the funding.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you. Um, Vanessa, I heard, I think, somebody said you had to leave, so that's why I wanted to bring this up before you left. The Tampa Park Apartments, I'm sure you, uh, kept up on all this, and, uh, apparently they're being, being or, or have been sold, uh, and there's eviction notices for three hundred and fifty residents, and some of them in the past, I guess, were Tampa Housing Client, Housing Authority clients, Section Eights, that sort of thing. So anyway, I know that's not city property, I know we're not the Housing Authority, but, um, uh, do we have any way of injecting ourselves and helping these folks, um, over and above the normal?
So when properties come offline like that, um, we usually get notified, and so between the city, the county, THHI, we start reaching out to the residents to see if we can help them to be housed, because we don't want them to be homeless. Um, we do have a rental assistance program, um, we'll be putting additional dollars into that program, reaching out and seeing if we can help them with finding places, um, but, yeah...
What is our, what is our outreach program specifically over there? I know there's, uh, there's a great library right there with a big meeting room, um...
Robert Saunders.
Right, maybe we could take advantage of that and, you know, send flyers or drop flyers and, and organize a meeting specifically before these, I mean, I think, I think I read they had till November, but that's gonna creep up on them.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, pretty quickly, so, uh, maybe in the next couple of months, we can be proactive.
We're coordinating to, um, we'll probably try to pull together a speed leasing event, and so we bring in a bunch of landlords that have properties, and we have our, um, counselors that will get them approved for vouchers, and then help them to move into a place. Um, but we're coordinating to pull that together. Um, the good thing with this one is, we have time. Um, we've gotten notices where the end of the month, people have to be moved out.
Right. Uh, I used to teach over there Booker T., which is literally a stone's throw from those apartments, and there's a lot of kids in there, a lot of families, so we, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you. Time is only about nine months at most, from now to November, and it flies by real quick. Just yesterday, I was twelve years old. Look at me today. I'm only fifteen. So what I'm trying to tell you is, putting in perspective, this sounds as something that is doable, but you have the most difficult task, and this is one of the hardest assignments anyone ever has, because this is a problem of not failure, but this is a problem of success. And when you have success, you start to get some failures, because you can't keep up with all the successes. So something is gonna go wrong, and it's your responsibility to fix that that goes wrong, and you're gonna be more entailed in working than you've ever been in your whole life. Take it from me.
Yes, yes.
So when you have success, this is a result of success, that something becomes more valuable than what was intended for originally, and therefore, somebody's being success, and somebody's falling on your lap, three hundred and fifty of them. And so, when you look around, everybody's talking, well, we're gonna build some house, and we're gonna, how much property the city has is buildable?
Right.
Not much.
Not much.
How much money do we have in the kitty? Not much. So I've said it before, and I'm gonna say it again, it cannot, this city or no other city can do this without corrobative action of other agencies and private individuals, where they can get a return of their money for the same charge that the bank is giving, and they're willing to put up that money for a certain amount of time to help somebody get a place to live. But the model that we have with me is chewable, but it's not swallowable. Because when you look at the rate that you give the lot and they sell a house for 180, 179.9, whatever, I don't know what affordable means. You know, I come from a great place, the condominiums of Tampa. Why do I say that? Because when I was young, I thought I was living a condo before it was invented, the word condo, because it was Tampa Housing Authority. But it was so nice to me that I thought it was a condominium. You had solar hot water. You had a brick home. You had a lot of kids to play with. What can I ask for? I had the greatest life in the world. So, what I'm saying is that these are the problems that you have when you are successful. Now, when you failed, when you failed, you say, "What am I gonna do with all this land? And who's gonna buy the house that we're gonna build?" You say, "No one." Now, just the reverse happens. You're successful, "I don't have enough housing and I don't have enough land." That's the problem that we have in society, not only here, but the whole United States. And you look at the world and you look at all the immigrants, look at Syria, look at the problems they have there. Compared to us, we're just a nimble starting to get the problem. So, I appreciate what you're doing, but you got a yeoman's work ahead of you. Congratulations for volunteering.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode.
Ms. McClary, I know you're working hard. And we've got a lot of things on the table, a lot of things been moving since we've been on this council. And we do appreciate, especially with the 11 graduates from the housing program. This past Saturday, we got another class starting up right away. So, that was a good thing that the CAA, CAC did to get that movement, that, those extra dollars to get them. So, I have to give props when you have to give it. But within the next 30 days, I'd like to meet with you and the Human Rights Director in reference to policies, in reference to still, uh, folks getting an opportunity, getting these, uh, getting, uh, in rental, uh, units. That's, that's a, a big thing for me. I hear it all the time. And secondly, when you do get ready to se- schedule a session for the Tampa Park Apartments meeting, I think council needs to be notified of when that meeting's going to occur. I'd like to be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you.
Boris Massey, Deputy City Attorney again. Um, I also have here with me this morning Kelly Austin and Mike Swain from the Human Resources Division of the City of Tampa Department. Um, and before they get up, I did wanna make it clear on the record, we are one of only 12 communities or local governments in the state of Florida that we've been able to discover who have either adopted by ordinance or have a policy where we do not inquire as to anyone's criminal record in connection with the initial job application. There is a background check that's done in the, after the initial review, the job application is made. And they are, they'll discuss how they review that and that there are guidelines in place. But, um, it's, this is called Ban the Box. We had adopted an ordinance in 2013 and we're one of only 12 communities in the entire state that does, does, does have a Ban the Box policy in place. So...
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Kelly Austin, Mike Swain from Human Resources. And just to, uh, back up a little bit on what Mr. Massey was elaborating on, uh, we are one of 12 municipalities within the state that adopted and goes by Ban the Box. Meaning, when you fill out your application for employment, your criminal background, should you have one, is not being inquired about. It is not inquired about throughout the entire interview and hiring process until you are the candidate that is potentially gonna be selected for a job. So, this avoids any sort of preconceived opinion of the hiring department. It is only asked if the candidate is selected and then they have to go through a background check and a drug screen prior to full employment with the City of Tampa. So, I think it's important that we just start there so that we know, um, there is, uh, there is the ability, um, to be very, very objective when you're hiring because you don't have any of these preconceived decisions based on something that you already know. And I think that's important. If an employee, a candidate is gonna be selected for employment with the city, they are provided with a background information form that they have to fill out, uh, agreeing that they're being truthful and that they're not falsifying any information and provide all relevant information based on the questions that are asked. Because you have a criminal background, that is not automatically exclude you from employment with the City of Tampa. So, I think that's important that we, we level set there as well. Um, there are varying circumstances and situations that have to be considered when, uh, reviewing a candidate's, uh, background. So, some of the things that we look at, and Mike is definitely the subject matter expert, but some of the things that we would look at is, um, the opportunity for employment. How do we look at that against, what is the specific position that the candidate's applying for relative to any criminal offense that they have or had? Uh, what is the distance of time between that offense and the present day where they're applying for the position? Um, what potentially could be any impact or repercussions, um, to existing employees that they work? To the citizens that their job potentially would enact, uh, them to interact with? Um, is it a driving position? Is it not a driving position? So, we can't one-stop shop, um, and say, "If this, then that." Now, we do have some broad guidelines that we look at. And, and then if there is something that comes back on a background check, Mike's organization is gonna look at that specifically and determine whether or not this is somebody we can move forward to employment or if we have to take a step back and look at them. Uh, we try to be progressive and go along with the times. Um, you know, there's some changes going on as it relates to marijuana infractions, where it could be a, a citation now, just like if you didn't have your dog on a leash or you watered your grass on the wrong day. And that's not gonna preclude you from employment if it happened a month ago, as long as you've done what you're supposed to do, meaning paid the citation, uh, agreed to follow up with any appropriate things that were mandated for you to do. So, we try to stay relevant to the times. Um, however, we do have to look at infractions and weigh those against what the position is the candidate's applying for and what, what if any liability or risk we would be submitting ourselves to. Because again, we are a self-funded, self-insured city. So, those things have to be taken into consideration. I would also add, I know there's been some dialogue about people approaching council and saying, "I got, you know, I, I wasn't considered for employment." We would strongly encourage, A, any candidate who has any questions to please reach out to us. I mean, we are, we wanna provide employment paths and opportunities. I mean, that's one of our mayor's initiatives. But also, we would ask council to, i- if you have questions, reach out to us. Because many times, perhaps, the communication of, of the candidate might not be exactly what necessarily was the deciding factor as to why we weren't able to offer them employment. And, you know, that could be followed up with, "But employment is available to you within a six-month period, should there be a position you wanna apply for again," or a three-year period or a five-year period. So, we, we try to make sure that we're not, if we have to say no, we're saying not now. We're not saying never, the majority of the time.
Thank you. Uh, is that it? Uh, Councilman Goode, Councilman Dinkfelder. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions.
Certainly.
You know, again, like you say, we, we get approached a lot of times by people saying, "I didn't get an opportunity." A lot of times with our youth services, they, uh, I remember last summer, there was a bunch of kids that applied, didn't get jobs for certain reasons or whatever. I just think that, I don't think the, our communication again with our website is clear enough to say, "This is the job. This is what you have to have. These are disqualifiers. This is a certain time limit." So, when people walk through the door, and you may have a ban on the box, a- and, and, and get to that, that process, you say, "I, I killed that interview. I know I got it, I got it." And then, all of a sudden, you give it. And then all of a sudden, a week later, come like the background comes back, now they're crushed again. Now, they're crushed again. "I got a fin-, I, I, I made a mistake. My, I got a second chance." And now, I'm crushed again. That's the problem I'm trying to vent and trying to make sure we give opportunities. I always look at, when I was coaching, when a guy couldn't make it and couldn't coach, I would say, "I want you to go take this class. You complete that class, that shows me your commitment, that you want it." And now, when a position comes available, you, I'm gonna bump you up because now you took the effort. And I think that's what the city needs to do, to have some type of class or outsourced class. So, when someone doesn't meet the guideline, they can say, "I went to the city's program or second chance program and I got a certificate of completion. I went through all these different steps to say, 'I'm a credible person to be able to work with the city.'" Because I want a city job. It's not just about a paycheck, my friends. It's about benefits. And when you've got benefits, that's the golden ticket to everything. So, that's what I look at, making sure people have opportunity with benefits to make it. Because you can get a small little penny a job or hustle or whatever. But at the end of the day, if you don't have healthcare, you don't have life insurance, you don't have disability insurance, other, these other things that we offer, dental, well, you'll say, "What an eye exam." Lucky, I, I had to find out my age. I thought I didn't have it. Finally, I did, had both pro- uh, both, uh, 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 apps in and I got a good discount on it. Those things are valuable to people. That's what I wanna see. To be able to give somebody an opportunity to where you say, "You can't get it this time, but if you go into our class that we offer, now we can say we have an opportunity now." The next time you go around, hey, you're bumped up, we know you are committed and you wanna be a city employee. That's why I talk about second chance, give an opportunity. Because a lot of times, I hear a lot of our own supervisors regularly say, "Hey, uh, we need to hire people, but HR just ain't letting them come through the door." Well, if that's the case, then I know people don't wanna say anything because they, you know, get job scared. But, you know, I've always been a big, I just say what I say. But, I think that we have to look at that to say, "Okay, if we've got departments that are saying, we, we, they got people they wanna hire, but they're not getting through the door, then let's find another avenue to get them some help, to get those, those guys or gals an opportunity and a second chance course or something to say, 'Okay, you've completed and we think we can give you an opportunity now.'"
I, I appreciate what you're saying and I think that we probably have some, Mike and I have chatted a little bit. We have some opportunity, maybe where we could put some information on the website. But what I would, what I would caution is, is I don't wanna commit to something that is so, so prescriptive, so if this, then that, because there are individual factors that go in everyone's case. A- a- and, and that could be a game changer, you know? But could we educate a little bit more? I mean, Mike and I have chatted about it. I think maybe there's some overarching things that we could share on the job website. But, but I don't wanna discourage anyone from applying for employment with the city. I think we're an employer of choice. And, and I think, when I, you know, when I say to you that we say, you know, "Not now, not never," that's because we do believe in second chances. Um, we exhibit that with our existing employees, you know? If we have existing employees that, um, have an infraction for drug or alcohol or something like that, we have, you know, programs that we put them into, right? So, we definitely believe in the second chances. But there's also, we have to balance that very carefully with, there are consequences for people's actions. I mean, we have laws and rules and, and, you know, we are no different than anyone else. And we appreciate the difference between an infraction that a juvenile made and an infraction that an adult made. You, you know what I mean? So, there's so many things that we have to look at and think about. But I, I, you know, I commit to you, we look at it from a place of, is this, is this person employable for the city? And, and we're not looking just to throw people out. And that's why that doesn't even come up until they've been the candidate that's selected. And, and then it's only determined through a background. And then, there's still dialogue that happens. Um, but we are all about second chances. And depending on the specifics of the infraction, that second chance could come in six months. That second chance might never come if it's something very egregious. Um, you know, as it relates to children or, you know, a violent assault of some sort. But you're, the majority of candidates that are probably speaking with you are not violent offenders. They're, they're probably people who have had some sort of infraction that's occurred in their life and maybe it happened four years ago. So, maybe in 12 months, they become eligible again for employment as long as their record has no other, um, situations. I just don't want us to commit to something that's so if this, then that because I think potentially that could discount some people that might not necessarily get discounted. But I think we could improve some of the communication on our website that maybe would allay some of the concerns or fears.
I, I can agree to disagree with some of what you're saying.
Uh-huh.
And, and I can agree with, we have to be careful who we do employ in egregious things and actions. But I still say to you, we have to still give something to the public, something to the people. Better communication on our website about the job site, better communication about this, this, and this infraction. But I also still say to you that we still should offer something to say, "Here's a course we do take, you have, that you can be able, it might not be to the first of list, but still, you can say, 'Hey, we've got some openings here. This person did this and that.'" And I think you kill can give opportunity where opportunity is. And I still contend to say, we still could look at doing something that help the people. We cannot say we cannot do anything. We have to say, "What can we do?" And that's what people wanna hear. "What can we do?" And that makes us a great thing.
Thank you, Councilman Goode, Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Councilman Goode's, uh, well stated. Um, two, two things. One, I wanted to, to second and reinforce, uh, what Councilman was saying about, you know, if, uh, let's say for argument's sake, if a position is a, a driving position, that the person's driving that truck or something all day long. And you guys know that, that you have certain criteria that's gonna knock somebody out at the tail end. You know, uh, a DUI within the last three years or whatever your criteria is that you know you just can't break, you can't flex. You have a policy. Then I agree with Councilman Goode's completely that on that specific, you know, item, driver, you should have a little paren- at the parenthetical at the bottom.
In the job posting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That says, "By the way, if you got a DUI in the last three years," or whatever your criteria is, "Don't bother." Because we don't wanna waste people's time and get their hopes up. Um, so that, so that, you know, and, and obviously, that's just an, an example of sex offender need not apply to a rec center, you know, that sort of thing. But anyway, I shouldn't joke, but that's serious stuff. But, but that sort of thing. Um, the other question I have is, is, that was a statement, this is a question, is, I'm glad that the prior council, Mr. Miranda and anybody else who was here, maybe, maybe, uh, Mr. Van Asgakko, uh, um, did the Ban the Box. I'm, I'm proud, I'm proud that the city did that and that the mayor at the time, Mayor Blackhorn, did that. Um, I think that's a positive, progressive move. But my question is, have we quantified, or do you have statistics or numbers to show that, uh, since we've done that, how many people got to the point of offering them a job but then got knocked out because of, uh, and I'm not looking for names or details because that'd be, that would be, um, rude and, and, and impositional of their privacy. But what I, you know, what I'm saying is, is do we have numbers? Do we, you know, are there numbers to show that, that we, you know, out of these 300 different situations, 10, you know, 10% got knocked out because we had to knock them out and why? Um, do we quantify that at all?
I, I can tell you just personally, in, in the short time that I've been with the city, I've only had two situations brought to my attention where it required consideration out of all the hiring in the short period I've been here. But Mike might have more, a little bit more detail or concrete information.
Mike Swain, Employment Services Manager. We certainly have stats that we could provide to council when it relates to how many people didn't make it through the hiring process. Um, I'm not sure how different those numbers would look as compared to before we went into the, the Ban the Box mode. Um, because people were still getting disqualified beforehand. People still get disqualified now. So, uh, it really, uh, it's my understanding that the, the gesture in getting rid of the Ban the Box was really to try and encourage more people to apply. And we're certainly getting, you know, a lot of applications. We're probably a little under 25,000 applications that we're seeing per year. So, we know that people wanna work for the City of Tampa. Um, the same types of disqualifications are similar now as it was before Ban the Box. I think people overwhelmingly want to be a part of this organization. We continue to make adjustments as we see the need with changes, as Kelly said, with the marijuana ordinance that's been enacted recently and in talking to other municipalities. We're very similar in, in how we review that now. It used to be a misdemeanor charge in most cases. It's now an ordinance violation. So, just as we treat an individual who had a, a dog leash violation or a lawn waring violation, we look at those individuals the same when it comes to DUIs. It was a situation where all applicants were disqualified. No matter what position you were applying for, you were disqualified. We now only apply that to a driving position. If you're applying to be in a clerical, uh, staff and you have a DUI, as long as your fines are paid, it will not stop you. So, we continue to evolve as things change in society. And, and we think we're, we're very, um, close to what other municipalities are doing based on the, the research that we've done.
So, um, you, you mentioned that you could provide us, you know, some level of information. But I'm wondering, do we have that kind of detail that says, "X number of people made it to that job offer but then got knocked out since the Ban the Box?" Because I'd be very curious, obviously, I don't want details on those people or, you know, their, their privacy. But I'd be very curious about, because I don't want us to pat ourselves on the back and say, "Hey, we did Ban the Box and that's it." Because if we're still turning a lot of people down at that final phase, um, you know, then maybe there's something a little bit more... um, you know, then maybe there's something a little bit more, you know, that we, that we could do along the lines of what Councilman alluded to. But my first question is, do we have that kind of detailed information? And if not, is that something we can start collecting down the road?
Well, when it comes to background failures, all of them, when they come to us, have been made an offer. So the stat that I could potentially get you would be any individual who's failed a background check once they come to us, as a recommendation from the department.
And that background check is typically criminal or?
That, well, it is a criminal history check for, for all individuals.
Okay.
So just to kind of make sure you understand that process, uh, as Kelly mentioned, the application, as long as an individual is deemed qualified, will be certified to the hiring department by my office. No discussion, no information about their criminal history check is known as that application goes to the department.
Sure.
The hiring department says, I'd like to select John Jones for this position. It comes to my office, we then start the background check. So that is when that process begins, the, it is outside of the department's hand. And based on the results that come back from that criminal history check, that's when we really look at it on a case by case basis to determine, is this person a fit for the city of Tampa?
I mean, I don't want to give you a lot of, of, of work to do, but I, I would think you guys would find it interesting as well to see how many, you know, what, how many people that is, and what percentage that is that get knocked out at that very last step. But maybe if y'all just look at 2019?
We can definitely do, um, anywhere from 16 on is much easier because we're in a, uh, electronic applicant tracking system.
Good.
Be a lot easier to.
Well, that'd be great if you had a couple of years and we could see if we're making improvements, what direction, what direction that line is headed. Um, I guess I'll, just to formalize that, if Mr. Chairman will accept, I'll do it in the form of a motion.
Sure.
And I'll be, I'm, I'm comfortable with just a written report back to City Council on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second, we have a second by Councilman Skalkow, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, anything else on this?
Swain, let me ask a question. I, I know in the olden days, when I first came on the police department, you came to the city first, and then the city clears you, and then you go over to the police department. Is that still standard now?
Uh, yes, sir. That, we have all those applications coming to our office. We screen those for minimum qualifications, and then we pass those applications to the police department.
And the reason I ask that, I look at the number of minority, uh, that are at the police department in fire. And I look at, when I came in, what that number was, and I look at now what that number is. So I'm trying to figure out, what is the barrier? Why is that number not increasing? Is it because they're failing background checks or what have you? So I don't know if your office has that stats or if the police department has that, but I'm really curious about why that, that increase is not happening. That really bothers me. I know when Chief Ford was here, uh, he had certain policies. And when I looked at the fire department in those years, his numbers increased. For whatever reason, they increased. Now they seem like they're kind of here now. So I, I'm trying to find, figure out and find out, I hope you get the information to me, that why, why are those numbers at this low level here? Why are they not increasing? What, what is it that we may be not doing? What is it that we may need to do or, or get the word out of what's going to make them qualified applicants? Because for years, that's bothered me, and those numbers are still here. And I think they need to be up a little bit. Like I said, when I came on, it was like less than 100. Now I think they may have just over 100, maybe 120, 30. Those numbers are very, very low for this time in age. I'm talking about 1989, 90, when I came on to now 2020. So I just want to figure out, what is it that we can do? Uh, is it criteria wise, maybe? I know the sheriff department has changed some of their criteria to lift their numbers up, and maybe we need to look at what they're doing as well, maybe, perhaps? But I'm just trying to see how we can get those numbers up, and if you can help me with that, I appreciate it.
I'll certainly have a conversation with TBD. TBD is the only area that does their own background check because they're law enforcement officers. Um, so I'll, I'll partner with them and, and see if we can get you some data on that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, however, I will say, you know, having been in this business for a long time, other municipalities are struggling when it comes to law enforcement and, uh, sworn fire positions. We're not the only ones that are facing some of these challenges. It's really a nationwide, um, issue. And all municipalities are really struggling with trying to find out how we reach a broader audience and create that interest. Um, some of them have now started to create more of those awareness positions where you're trying to reach individuals at a younger age, um, so that they stay out of trouble, stay away from drugs, and hopefully they're convinced to go into our explorers program on the police and fire side. And that seems to be something that's helping. Uh, it's not the only cure, but that, those are some things that are going on.
Thank you, sir.
You are.
Anyone else? Uh, thank you very much for your work. You know, one thing I was thinking of is, uh, a lot of our community partners on, on these issues, like in, uh, we're working on, um, uh, with the Equal Justice Initiative, on initiative for, uh, to get a memorial marker for racial lynchings in the, in the Tampa area, uh, throughout the Jim Crow era. And one of the, the best partners that we've had is Abe Brown Ministries, Mr. Robert Blount, uh, who's a tremendous individual, and they just do such a great job. And, you know, it'd be great if the city, if, if it doesn't do it now, I, I, I speak from ignorance, uh, but could work with organizations like that, 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 uh, take people who have had challenging past and do holistic rehabilitation of not just feeding the stomach, but, but feeding the soul and healing the soul. They, they just do a great job, and my hat's always off to them. So just, uh, an idea, but thank you very much. Oh, yes, sir.
To, to add to that, and, and to piggyback on something that Kelly said earlier, the Mayor's Workforce Development Initiative. I sat next to Robert as a part of that committee, so I, I know him. And I, I think as we start to, uh, go further down that path, we'll see some opportunities and be able to take advantage of those to help the city as well as the committee.
No, great, he's a tremendous person, so, thank you. Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Massey, anything else on this item?
One last thing, and, and before I move to the last item, I actually, uh, had a conversation with Robert Blount on this issue. And, uh, he had provided a lot of helpful information. Affordable housing is one of his major concerns, I think, at this point in time. And he's invited me and others that, from the administration and you all, if you haven't been, to take a tour of Abe Brown Ministries and, and, and have conversations with him on how we can partner with them. And I think that is a really important step that we, we should take. Um, I also have here, because this was another question that came up in this area, is city contracting, um, ordinances, policies, procedures. I have several folks from Greg Spreeman and Greg, uh, Hart, I think, there's still an audience of us here, who can talk about, um, if you want, our, our contracting policy.
And before we go there, we're approaching noon. Council members, how are y'all with, um?
Thirty minutes, and that's it for me.
Okay, yeah, and we can, and then we'll take a break until, uh, sort of about 12:25. We'll take a break until, when do y'all want to return?
1:30.
1:30, is everybody, Charlie, everybody good with 1:30?
Do we have that much? Do we have that much?
Yeah, I think we do, because, um, we have item number four, item number eight, and then we have a walk on.
If, if his contract, if, if, if we need to break now, I guess they can come back with eight, uh, if that would be okay.
It is, they've been here all morning waiting to talk to you all about that issue, so if you could give them a few minutes.
Sure, of course.
I, I did want to say at the outset, we do have an ordinance on the books that does ask in every competitive procurement process we have, whether the bidder has a similar band the box type of process that we do have. We do ask that, there's no penalty if they don't, but it is kind of an educational process uh, that we're trying to institute. Um, so I would invite Mr. Spreeman or Mr. Hart, if y'all want to come up here and talk a little bit about, uh, contracting. This is a, the complex area as well, because, you know, we do want to work with and try to encourage, um, you know, second chance, uh, folks being employed by who we, uh, by private folks that we, you know, we contract with. But we do have a host of requirements. We, as you all know, every day we get a, when you have your regular agenda, you have a slew of single source type of contracts. Part of that problem is, the number of requirements we impose limit who are bidding on our contracts at this point in time, given kind of the economy and where we're at. So it's a difficult issue of the contracting context.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Dingfelder, did you want to say something?
Just, just while Greg is coming up, um, I just wanted to help council a little bit and clear out items five through seven with a motion to continue. I've talked to Mr. Snelling, to continue them to our July 30th workshop and consolidate all three of them as one agenda item in the workshop itself.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion, and that's five through seven, sir?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir. If they're all together, um, we can all set them each for 9:30 AM, it's the same staff.
Yeah, just consolidate them as one single item, one single chapter 27 item, and, um, whatever Mr. Shelby suggests.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, second by Councilman Skalkow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, good morning, Council Greg Spreeman, Department of Public Safety. We followed the lead, uh, from our Human Resources Department, our city legal team, uh, in terms of putting requirements on all of our BIS and RFPs, for contractors to follow the city's process with regard to our hiring and screening applicants. So we feel that that process is working well. Uh, but again, we, we put those requirements on all of our BIS and RFPs, and we, and that's what we expect our contracts to do, and we believe that they're doing that. Uh, on occasion, when someone does have to work on city property, uh, we do, uh, have those individuals vetted to our, um, police department, through FDLE, to make sure that they meet the requirements before they come on city property. We do follow the ordinance as prescribed, uh, by the city in all of our BIS and RFPs.
Morning, Council Gregory Hart, Equal Business Opportunity Program, Small Business Development. I want to assure council that, um, per city code of ordinance, specifically, uh, chapter 26.5, which governs the Equal Business Opportunity Program, does not preclude, um, individuals who may have misdemeanor records or criminal records from one, being certified as a small minority woman-owned firm, nor does it preclude any of the vendors or contractors who engage in business with the city from, um, having, uh, employees that might have misdemeanor or criminal records. So, uh, I feel good about that. As a matter of fact, um, a few of our, um, prime contractors, um, at present, um, do have second chance, uh, employee policies, and some of whom have taken under their wings and into their mentor protege program, uh, individuals or employees who've had and do have misdemeanor records or criminal records. So, um, don't note to what extent it's a problem under the Equal Business Opportunity Program.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No? No? All right. Anybody else on this item? No? Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? If you have anything to say, please come forward. No, seeing none, all right, we will move on to number four.
Morris Massey, Deputy City Attorney. Before we go into the, this item, this workshop, um, Kathy Beck and Brian Knox are here to present, um, answers to your various questions that came up in connection with this workshop, one of which was, how many trees have been removed under the new state statute? And they do have statistics for you based on the information that they have. We may not know everything, to be honest, out there. I do want to caution council that we're still in controversy, potential litigation on several issues that relate to that state statute. So we would prefer, and I've been cautioning you not to go into discussion about the state statute and its application, a lot, and within the city limits, but we do have the statistics for you as part of this workshop.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, Mr. Massey, before you step away, um, I do want to ask about the state statute generally, okay? In a very broad sense, is, um, uh, you know, I don't know, is legislature still in session?
Yes.
I mean, what, I know we have a, or more than one lobbyist up there. What, what if anything are we doing to modify or amend that statute?
Well, frankly, what I've heard recently was there was amendments proposed that would be detrimental, further detrimental to, uh, our ability to regulate the removal of trees. And, and we were able to fend off that change. We have not been able to make any other, I don't think there's going to be any other changes to the statute at this point in time.
But have we, did we propose, did we offer?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, Councilman Dingfelder, I'll have to find out. But I, it is, unfortunately, and, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to say that we're reactive, but to some degree, up in Tallahassee, the local governments are trying, are more on the defense at this point in time, because there are more and more efforts to take away your ability to regulate in certain areas. And so we're, um, I know that there was a proposal to further change that statute that would have further limited our ability to regulate in this area, and that was fended off successfully. But I think that was a major effort on trees this, this last session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Beck?
Good afternoon, council. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. I'd like to introduce Brian Knox, who will be assuming my role in, on an interim basis, starting Monday. Mr. Knox comes with a wealth of professional integrity and skill. Um, he's also handed all of you a report that we're going to be discussing this afternoon. And from the, my understanding of your motion, it was to provide you with a report on the trees that have been removed under the new ordinance and a comparison of trees in the prior year, and to discuss the number of trees lost, um, under HB 1159. Um, I'd like to start with your first question, um, explaining the tree ordinance with a report on the trees that have been removed under the new ordinance. Just for your information, on June 1st, as you know, the tree code was, uh, adopted. On June 21st, we were able to program EXELA to start capturing tree removal information that is done manually by our forester examiners. And the information I'm presenting to you today is, um, from the timeframes of June 21st, 2019, to December 31st, 2019. What we're going to do this afternoon is to review the residential and commercial building permit information and the tree removal zone eligible lot reviews. For those of you that, um, may need a refresher on the tree removal zone, which was a new part of our code, um, in June, I will refer you to Exhibit C, where you've got your definition of a tree removal zone eligible lot. And you can take a look at that to refresh your memory. That, uh, portion of a lot that remains after the principal structure or setbacks, plus five feet on the front and sides and corner yards and 10 feet in the rear. And if you look at Exhibit B, it's a, um, a plan view of that tree removal zone.
Can I ask a quick question?
Surely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before you go on, um, I'm trying to remember if I made this motion, yep. Um, did, so the last part of the motion speaks to, uh, the, the loss, and I, maybe this is what Morris was alluding to, the loss due to the current, to the new statute.
Correct.
Um, have we, do we have any ability to quantify that? That's not what this.
I've got that, I've got that information in, um, your third bullet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just taking you through the order that the motion was made, yes, sir.
All right, so we were able, okay, I see.
You're on number one, yes.
I apologize.
That's correct, all right.
And then the, the other question is, these statistics started out about a year ago when we started with the EXELA, is that what you're saying? So do we have any baseline in terms of knowledge, or you have practical knowledge, but do we have any statistical knowledge about the earlier years and how that compares to post ordinance?
No, no, we do not, unfortunately. In order to capture the information on tree removal for new construction, we have, we had to reprogram EXELA to be able to capture it so that we could report to you today. Um, that, that information has to be entered by the foresters manually on each and every permit they review after the site inspection and plan review process has taken place. So it's a, you know, it's a time-consuming process, but we've got the information for you here.
All right, thank you.
Um, Natural Resources staff, this only, uh, this information relates to what Natural Resources staff has reviewed. Um, during the time period from June 21st, 2019, to December 31st, 2019, we reviewed a total of 393, uh, new construction building permits that had the following analysis. There were 188 lots, including residential and commercial, that met the, the tree removal zone eligibility criteria, which again is referenced on Exhibit C on your, uh, report. Of those 188 lots, eligible lots, 24 grand trees were permitted for removal, and 70 protected trees were permitted for removal. The other 205 lots that were non TRZ eligible, there were 28 grand trees removed and 34 specimen or trees over 24 inches in diameter. A comparison again to the year prior was not able to be made because we didn't have the ability to program EXELA or enter that data from the, uh, previous years. Now moving on to number three. The number of trees lost due to the HB 1159 state statute is only reflective of what we, we know about. Again, the statute doesn't require anybody to, uh, inform us that they're doing this. Uh, so we responded to 37 tree removal complaints. Uh, those were complaints that came into our office stating that, um, inquiring whether people had tree removal permits to remove the trees. Of those 37 complaints, a total of 117 trees were. Of those 37 complaints, a total of 117 trees were determined to be, to have been removed under the state statute. Of those 117 trees, 35 were grand trees and 82 were protected. And if you'll notice, that number is higher than the number that we approved under the new ordinance or the tree removal zone.
Councilman Dinkfelder.
Of the, of the trees that you found that were removed under the state ordinance, how many of those were mitigated?
None of them, sir.
Am I, am I going out of my bounds?
You're not necessarily going out of your bounds.
I thought I was being vague enough.
But the state statute does not require mitigation. It basically says they are allowed to remove that tree.
And that's understandable. I'm going to get to another point in a second.
And I did want to correct, Jerick Simpson did tell me that it was a bill introduced to repeal that statute, but it never got to committee. So, there was an effort made to try to repeal it, but it did not get to committee.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I understand and I appreciate, and I know that when you speak, even EF Hud listens. But, but I want to make sure that when I see these statistics, can you tell us in a vague way or indirectly way, of all your figures and point three of three dots, these come mainly from big, big removal of sites or individual sites?
Both, both. There was typically numerous trees removed on the complaint, you know, when we received the complaint. They could have been very large sites where numerous trees were removed, up to 28 or 30.
And I know there's a lawsuit, so I'm not going to go there, but I'm not going to name it specifically. Is there something that happened in the southern area of the city that was, were those lots, those trees included in this?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I, I just want to get some clarity in my mind as to how these numbers came about.
Yes, sir. The remainder of them were single, pretty much single-family residential lots.
I appreciate, now, one other question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The trust fund of the trees, do we have a better system now on the monies going into the trust fund and the trees being planted and in and out out of a fund so we can tell that all the monies that came in were put back out to put the trees back up?
Yes, we do. We have now five tree trust funds and we still had money left over in the old tree trust fund. I've met with Parks and Recreation. It's my understanding that they have not utilized the new tree trust funds for planting as of this.
And also, there was, at some time back in history, trees were planted under lines, electric lines. We're not doing that.
No, sir.
A, and B, now, I believe individual residents can apply for a tree to be planted in their house and we can do that now before you couldn't do that?
That's correct.
So, I promised some people in Debbie's Island some trees, sir. If they're listening, you can call and ask for them. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Are there any other questions?
I'm talking to her, but she wasn't listening.
Councilman Gudes and then Councilman Dinkfelder.
I just want to clarify what Ms. Miranda was saying. You said we have an existing tree trust fund and then we have a new trust fund that has five different accounts?
Five different accounts, yes, sir, to reflect the planning districts in the city of Tampa.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's what it's for. It was done to have clarity that everybody got trees, not because of one area or the other, that everybody got the uniformals. That's what it was done for.
So, if you remove a tree in, in, let's just say, the South Planning District, you mitigate the tree in the South Planning District?
That's what it's for.
Mm-hmm.
I'm waiting in line.
Go ahead. I'd like to, her to finish her report and then I'll ask.
My report's complete, sir.
We're not, and under state statute, we don't have to receive mitigation, but I still feel that that's mediated, I mean, that is, that is preempted by the state that is, it is affecting every citizen in this city. How, how can we get the state to clarify this state ordinance? I mean, besides raising our voice and waving our hands and writing letters and, I, I personally feel that this preemption is hurting the citizens of our great city and I feel like, again, hands are tied.
I mean, Council could adopt a resolution asking that the statute be rescinded. We could send that on. I think working with our legislative delegation may be an effective way to deal with it because they're the ones in Tallahassee that propose legislation, but you can, unfortunately, they have preemptive authority and they have occupied that field to some extent by passing that stat, this statute. And that's somewhat in controversy and so we really don't want to get into how much that preemption is or further conversation about that, but if you, but if you want clarifications or changes to that, we really need to work through our local legislative delegation.
Let me go a different angle. Just because an arborist comes in and says, no, that tree needs to be taken down, that tree is dead, what course does the city have with the arborists to investigate?
We're, we're, right now, that's kind of what's the subject of some of the controversies. I'd rather not get into that right now.
All right, I dig.
Councilman Dinkfelder.
Yeah, sadly enough, that's, that's being abused. That's all I'll say on that one. Kathy, again, I want to reiterate our appreciation for your many, many decades of service to the city and to our tree canopy.
Thank you very much, sir.
I don't want to minimize the loss of these grand trees, whether it's the loss under the statute or the loss under the ordinance, but I am curious, we've done an inventory, I think, every five or 10 years, and I know we did one fairly recently.
Yes, sir.
In the last year or two. In regard to that inventory, do you have any recollection of how many grand trees there are in the city?
The, the analysis doesn't give us specific numbers of grand trees. They give us percentages of tree size and the tree size for grand trees is 32 inches and the report, the 2016 report, has indicated that there are less than 2% of our overall canopy that is 32 inches and over. And our next.
How would that equate into numbers of trees?
We haven't done that analysis, sir. We've got our.
I mean, 2% of what?
32% of the overall number of trees.
You said 2%?
Less than 2%.
Right, of the total number of trees, but I'm just wondering, in order to do the math that I'm looking for, what's the total number of trees?
They're in the millions. I don't have the report in front of me, but you'd have to recognize that when the, when they inventory the trees, there's two ways we do it. We, it's done through a spatial analysis, through USF, and it's done through reinventory of 200 permanent plots throughout the city. So, there's not an exact accounting of every single tree in the city. It's done through those two methods and so that they can get.
I remember walking neighborhoods 20 years ago and somebody taught us how to do it and we actually were doing a physical accounting, an inventory of grand trees.
Yes, that, that was done as part of a grant.
Yeah.
And many, many, many years ago.
I mean, I was a volunteer. They didn't make me do it as a councilman, but.
Well, thank you for volunteering. But we've got our scope of work for our 2021 analysis and if there was anything city council, you know, specifically wanted the universities to study, we could entertain that in the scope.
Well, I think, I mean, personally, I think the grand trees have been something that we've always been extra concerned about and obviously for good reason, it's only 2% of the total trees we have.
Less than 2%.
And typically, you know, it might take a tree, you know, 30, 40 years or more to get to that point of being a grand tree.
That's correct.
Depending on the species. So, you know, I guess it'd be helpful to know ultimately what, what sort of quantity that, you know, of grand trees we have and at what rate we're losing them.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that that's going to be pretty important for us to determine and frankly, if we can go to the legislature with that sort of quantitative information, maybe it would help, you know, help our position.
Okay, I can certainly discuss that, well, in the short time I have, or Mr. Knox can discuss that with the universities to see if we could, that's something we can do. I know that we're going to be asking for an analysis now that we're capturing information parcel by parcel for this, for the reporting requirements. They're going to be doing a invent, I mean, an analysis of that canopy before the development and after. So, maybe that's something we could incorporate in there now that we've got the parcel by parcel information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dinkfelder.
Council members, please forgive me for this, but my frustration level is very, very low. Ms. Beck, you, you, along with other people like Kristen Mora, city staff, the neighborhoods, the Builders Association, came up with a great ordinance.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Most legally binding, most ecology binding.
That's correct.
Ordinance that I've seen. And again, ladies and gentlemen, that may be watching this, it's not our hands that are tied, it's your hands. I'm asking that you call your state legislator and have them do something about the preemption that we're having on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome.
Would anybody from the public like to speak on this item? If you do, please approach the lectern, state your name and you have three minutes per person. Go ahead.
And I'm still Mary Lou Bailey. I worked tirelessly on this tree ordinance as a volunteer for well over two years, volunteer efforts. I am still outraged that the state took this power away from us to protect our communities. I would very much like Council to make a motion that we're going to fight it and do it with real strategy and help. We need some hired legal guns, lobbyists, whatever. A lot of passionate people will go to Tallahassee, but this thing needs to be repealed. If we can't repeal it, then we need to modify it so that there's reporting and mitigation. It's not okay for them to come maraud our community and affect our health and well-being in this manner. I'm very upset about it and I want you to do everything you can to overturn this thing or at least get the reporting and the mitigation. My second request is that we should clarify this devil because it gives wide sweeping powers already, but I have several instances where I know it was abused further, where people think you can just do whatever you want without a building permit even, which happened across the street from me. So, we need public clarity and education on what people can and can't do while we simultaneously work to repeal or amend this thing to protect the well-being and health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Morning, Council. Steve Mickelany. I, I too worked on that ordinance for a very long time and I think we, we exhausted Chelsea Johnson's living room, but, and all of her, her refreshments, but regardless, I think that this code really hasn't had a chance to work yet. It's still being implemented and some of the staff members, the city needs to assist in regulating the areas that can be regulated, is just now occurring. I think it's important for us to move forward with the, the tree planting program and the tree trust fund monies and we, part of this process, we agreed that at six months, which is now, actually, it's a little bit later than that, but to, to look at some of the provisions in that code that needed to be adjusted. And a couple of them that are causing issues are that there's a $40 charge in there for trimming trees for all property owners. And I would venture to say that Kathy can probably tell you there's been one or two permits that are pulled and yet tree trimming occurs all the time. It, it's unenforceable. It, it places a hardship on individuals and it should be looked at and perhaps considered to be removed. The other issue is it, it has to do with right-of-way trees and notice that is provided for them. I would ask that this council consider requiring that the city, when it's in its process of removing trees, that they be required to notify the organizations that are identified on the registry. Some of the neighborhoods have a vested interest personally, as in New Suburb Beautiful. They bought and paid for the trees that were installed there, so they have a vested interest in maintaining them and in prolonging their, their longevity. So, the notice issue has, was left undone. It is not resolved and the notice is not required when you're removing right-of-way trees. They may be required to be removed because they're dangerous and if they are dangerous, that's fine, but the organizations that are listed in, in the city registry should be notified. Again, I think the staff has done a remarkable job in trying to implement a very complex new code and we are just now beginning to see how it's going to function. So, thanks to Kathy Beck and her staff for all they've done and there's a few tweaks in there, but I think that we're on a good path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Lorraine Perrino, South Tampa. You know, 117 trees in six months is 20 trees a month. I mean, yeah, 20 trees a month. That's a lot. That affects our air pollution, our water storage, our shade, our natural habitat for animals, native animals, insects, butterflies. Kathy has been a real asset to the Natural Resources Department in her years that she's been there. I understand she's retiring next year, next week. I think you all should make sure that she's replaced with another tree advocate who's done just as good a job as she has and, and monitor that, you know, make sure that that position is advertised and filled as quickly as possible because we're in a precarious situation here. The other thing I'd like to say is that since we're losing so many trees with no mitigation, I think it's important for the Parks Department, the City of Tampa Parks Department and the Traffic Department to plant trees wherever there's space for that. The, I mean, the Transportation Department can park, can plant trees in transportation circles where there's no possibility of putting a little park there, a pocket park. They can still plant trees there. And when I say trees, I'm not talking about palm trees because palm trees are considered grasses. They have no beneficial effect on the ecology. They're just a tourist thing. So, encourage the Parks Department to plant trees wherever they can. The Tremendous Tree can help out with that and the, the Tree Bank can help out with that. And, and, you know, we have, this, the tree code imposes standards on people before they can put, cut a tree down or have a tree removed. I would encourage the city council to make sure that those standards are followed and that not any arborist can just come in here and say that healthy grand tree over there needs to be removed because some developer wants to buy that piece of property. So, follow the standards that we worked so hard to, to create and impose in the, in the tree code. So, all these things can help to mitigate a tremendous, I mean, a terrible HB 1159 that is devastating the tree canopy of the whole state of Florida. But on the local level, we can do things, you know, encourage more trees to be planted by the city, the Parks Department, the Transportation Department, adhere to the rules that are already in place and, and make sure that we, we keep a healthy Natural Resources staff, you know, as it has been, to make sure that these things are getting done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See how irreplaceable you are?
Yes.
You are loved. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Nancy Stevens. I guess I wanted to come to thank Kathy for all she's done and, and it's wonderful to have this count now that counting the trees, we can keep track of what, where we are and what we're losing and putting together the code. It's a very strong code that she worked very hard and a bunch of us worked very hard in building and there are still things in the code that we can use, so we can't just say oh, the state just, I mean, we can't give up. We have to enforce it. We've got to continue to enforce the code that we have as much as we can and continue having a strong Natural Resources Department to, to protect our trees and do what they can with the, with they have. So, thank you very much, Kathy, for all you've done. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thanks. I just want to give one little quick anecdote about the trees and Mr. Massey, I will try to tread lightly. So, about a month or two ago, I have a palm tree and it needed pruning, you know, just cleaning out, and so I hired a tree guy and he comes out to do, do the palm tree, which I don't think requires a permit, at least I hope not, otherwise I'm in trouble. And while he's there, he looked at this beautiful grand, grand oak, live oak, grand oak that I have over my house. It's been there, Lord knows, probably 100 years. It's massive. It's hanging over my house and I love it. And he looked at it and he goes, he, he kind of whispers to me and he says, he didn't know who I was. Well, not that that matters, but, but he knew I worked for the city. And he said, by the way, he said, we can take that tree out now without doing anything. And that tree was totally healthy. I mean, I mean, you come take a look at it, it's one of the healthiest grand oaks in South Tampa. Just a beautiful grand oak providing shade, you know, squirrels, birds, the whole nine yards and, and not just shade for me, but shade for my neighbors too. And, but he kind of whispers to me and he says, he says, he says, you know, the, the city can't enforce anything anymore and, and we can take that out without any problem. And that's, that's what's going on. That's the aggressive nature of the tree industry. Not all of them, I'm sure, but there are some bad apples. I'll never call him again because I know where he stands, but that's, and, and that to me is a big problem with the, with the statute also is there's an inherent conflict between.
there's an inherent conflict between the vendor who goes out there to do the look at and the fact that he's going to be making money. So it's an inherent financial conflict. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney Jared Simpson. I was given permission from the Deputy City Attorney and the City Attorney to inform you about the prosecution that, that I've been working on. And it is the intention of the City Attorney's Office to pursue any arborist that would abuse the statute, and we do intend to enforce the city's code to the fullest extent that we feel that we can under, under the law. Those cases were heard yesterday in code enforcement. We had a four-hour hearing where we made many arguments, the argument that you just made, that was discussed. We don't want to get too much in the details. We do anticipate litigation on that. But I was given permission to at least reassure you that we, the City Attorney's Office does intend to pursue every avenue that we have, both in the, in the legal arena as well as in the, in the lobbying and the legislature to try to fight for the city's ordinance.
Thank you very much. I hope you gave him a business card.
Oh, after you said that?
Yeah. Councilman Citro, Councilman Carlson?
Jared, thank you for all your hard work, especially in this matter. You have helped out the city in tremendous ways. If I may, I am sad to see that you're leaving. And I wish you all the success in your future endeavors in Lakeland?
Right. Thank you.
Okay. I am sad to see you leaving.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
I'm not, hang, hang, hang on, hang on. Ms. Beck, thank you again for all your hard work. Mr. Knox?
Sir.
You have helped us, helped me out before with the various review board, and I'm sure that you are going to do an excellent job trying to feel the hot fill, the high heels that Ms. Beck has left you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson?
Can we make a motion now, or do we have to wait?
If you want.
Can I make a quick motion, see if you guys like it? Listening to public comment and Mary Lou Bailey in particular, I think that when we write resolutions to give to the, to other government agencies, they don't listen. It's nice symbolically, but here's, here's an idea that I had. I'd like to make a motion to ask that the administration utilize city government relations resources to partner with the community and our partners to push for a repeal of the state tree preemption.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any legal issue? No?
No, I mean, you certainly asked the administration and its lobbying efforts to, to work to, to repeal the state statute that deals with the, what the government can do with the removal of trees.
Yeah, I think, go ahead. No, if the, if the, if the city lobbyists work with the community members, you know, who can rally a bunch of people, we might actually have an impact. If we write a resolution, it may not do nothing, but.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Councilman Moran?
No lunch.
All right, we're, we're in recess until 1:30.